Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming down tonight. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd please stand and join with us.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands in our hands. One nation, united in its own parts.
Madam Clerk, will you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Bill Della Penha is absent. Councilmember Engler?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Adam?
Here.
Mayor McCoy?
Present. Green light's on. There we go. Tonight, we have a few special presentations. And we're going to begin. The first of three will be for the Conejo Senior Volunteer Program. And I'd like to invite and welcome Laura Conway and Julie Spivak up here to join me, if you would. Red Rover, Red Rover, come on over. Yeah. All right, I've got to say a few words here and then turn it over to you. This past August, the Conejo Senior Volunteer Program hosted their second annual charity karaoke. It was a sing for a cause, and it was a fundraiser, and it helped raise $35,000 for a variety of local nonprofits. And you were managed to raise that because I wasn't there to sing.
You can come next year.
I can't carry a tune in a bucket. I heard it was a wonderful event and a lot of fun for everyone who participated and attended. I did vote, I believe, however. Laura and Julie, thank you for organizing this event and for all the work you do through the CVSP to support the City of Thousand Oaks. And I'm going to present you with a certificate. But first, say a couple things, and then we'll take a picture together. Come on, if you'd like to.
Thank you so much. We just want to thank the City of Thousand Oaks and the City Council for inviting us here this evening and for this recognition. We are just so grateful to be a part of this community and have so many amazing nonprofit organizations to work with. We could not have done this event without all of our volunteers, the CSVP Advisory Council, and the 19 nonprofits in this community that joined us. So we just want to thank you so much for having us here tonight. Thank you.
Real quick, since I'm here, I'm going to promote 2020 Charity Karaoke. I want to thank the council members also for inviting us here tonight. I'd like to return the favor by inviting all of you to come out next summer. If you want to get on stage with the band and sing for a cause, we'd love to have you. And everybody here, please come out and join us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's take a picture together. All right, Carl, let's go over here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Next, I'd like to invite Susan Whitewood from the Ventura County Behavioral Health Department to tell us about their program, No Place Like Home. Susan, welcome.
I'm here. Thank you. Hi.
Come on up.
So where should I point this? Point it there. Okay. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor McCoy. And good evening, council members and city staff. My name is Susan Whitewood, and I work for the County of Ventura Behavioral Health Department. And I'm here tonight to tell you about the voter-approved No Place Like Home ballot initiative that provides funding to build housing for the homeless and the mentally ill. You know, I can't see that slide. So I'm going to do my best to guide you through this presentation, even though I have my glasses on. It's a long ways away. Sometimes when I talk about homelessness and the reasons for homelessness, I feel like I'm stating the obvious. This is just a list of things that create barriers to housing and even cause homelessness. Housing, as you know, is tied to income. And housing is also evidence-based care for homelessness. The mentally ill and homeless live an average of 15 to 30 years less than the rest of the general population. And unstable or unsafe housing can cause or increase stress, anxiety, and depression for all of us, not just the homeless and the mentally ill. Believe me, a positive change in housing can also result in a positive change in other areas of a person's life, including increased well-being. So Ventura County Behavioral Health has built and is managing housing throughout the county. And we've done this over the course of the last 20 years. We coordinate appropriate housing for the mentally ill. We serve the seriously mentally ill. And of those that we serve, I would say that about 30% are homeless. So not everyone that we serve is homeless. We partner with builders, property management companies, private landlords, service providers, et cetera, to develop and provide this housing countywide. We employ a low-barrier "housing first" evidence-based model when we test people for eligibility for housing. And we deliver evidence-based services to clients once they're housed to help them remain housed. Some of the barriers to housing for homeless and mentally ill. Number one on the list, the rent is too high. That's true for many, many people. The lack of housing is also a result of a low vacancy rate also creates barriers to housing for homeless and mentally ill, actually for all of us. And this, of course, was exacerbated by the recent fires because rental units are now being occupied by people that are rebuilding. Lack of supportive housing in the county is also a barrier. By that, by supportive housing, I'm talking about boarding care facilities and also residential care facilities for the elderly, where homeless and mentally ill clients can receive a higher level of service. The demographic in our county that is increasing more than any other in terms of homelessness is the senior population. And there is a lack of housing for that population. Mental illness makes finding
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming down tonight. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd please stand and join with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing on the nation under God indivisible with the review of justice.
Madam Clerk, will you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Bill Delapena, absent. Councilmember Engler?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Adam?
Here.
Mayor McCoy?
Present. Green light's on. There we go. Tonight, we have a few special presentations, and we're going to begin. The first of three will be for the Conejo Senior Volunteer Program, and I'd like to invite and welcome Laura Conway and Julie Spivak up here to join me, if you would. Red Rover, Red Rover, come on over. Yeah. All right, I've got to say a few words here and then turn it over to you. This past August, the Conejo Senior Volunteer Program hosted their second annual charity karaoke. It was a sing-for-a-cause, and it was a fundraiser, and it helped raise $35,000 for a variety of local nonprofits. And you were managed to raise that because I wasn't there to sing.
You can come next year.
I can't carry a tune in a bucket. I heard it was a wonderful event and a lot of fun for everyone who participated and attended. I did vote, I believe, however. Laura and Julie, thank you for organizing this event and for all the work you do through the CVSP to support the City of Thousand Oaks. And I'm going to present you with a certificate, but first say a couple things, and then we'll take a picture together. Come on, if you'd like to.
Thank you so much. We just want to thank the City of Thousand Oaks and the City Council for inviting us here this evening and for this recognition. We are just so grateful to be a part of this community and have so many amazing nonprofit organizations to work with. We could not have done this event without all of our volunteers, the CSVP Advisory Council, and the 19 nonprofits in this community that joined us. So we just want to thank you so much for having us here tonight. Thank you.
Real quick, since I'm here, I'm going to promote 2020 Charity Karaoke. I want to thank the council members also for inviting us here tonight. I'd like to return the favor by inviting all of you to come out next summer. If you want to get on stage with the band and sing for a cause, we'd love to have you. And everybody here, please come out and join us. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Next, I'd like to invite Susan Whitewood from the Ventura County Behavioral Health Department to tell us about their program, No Place Like Home. Susan, welcome. Where are you?
I'm here. Thank you. Hi.
Come on up.
So where should I point this? Point it there. Okay. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor McCoy. And good evening, council members and city staff. My name is Susan Whitewood, and I work for the County of Ventura Behavioral Health Department. And I'm here tonight to tell you about the voter-approved No Place Like Home ballot initiative that provides funding to build housing for the homeless and the mentally ill. You know, I can't see that slide, so I'm going to do my best to guide you through this presentation. Even though I have my glasses on, it's a long ways away. Sometimes when I talk about homelessness and the reasons for homelessness, I feel like I'm stating the obvious. This is just a list of things that create barriers to housing and even cause homelessness. Housing, as you know, is tied to income, and housing is also evidence-based care for homelessness. The mentally ill and homeless live an average of 15 to 30 years less than the rest of the general population. And unstable or unsafe housing can cause or increase stress, anxiety, and depression for all of us, not just the homeless and the mentally ill. Believe me, a positive change in housing can also result in a positive change in other areas of a person's life, including increased well-being. So Ventura County Behavioral Health has built and is managing housing throughout the county, and we've done this over the course of the last 20 years. We coordinate appropriate housing for the mentally ill. We serve the seriously mentally ill, and of those that we serve, I would say that about 30% are homeless. So not everyone that we serve is homeless. We partner with builders, property management companies, private landlords, service providers, et cetera, to develop and provide this housing countywide. We employ a low-barrier Housing First evidence-based model when we test people for eligibility for housing. And we deliver evidence-based services to clients once they're housed to help them remain housed. Some of the barriers to housing for homeless and mentally ill. Number one on the list, the rent is too high. That's true for many, many people. The lack of housing is also a result of a low-- the low vacancy rate also creates barriers to housing for homeless and mentally ill, actually for all of us. And this, of course, was exacerbated by the recent fires because rental units are now being occupied by people that are rebuilding. Lack of supportive housing in the county is also a barrier. By that, by supportive housing, I'm talking about boarding care facilities and also residential care facilities for the elderly, where homeless and mentally ill clients can receive a higher level of service. The highest-- the demographic in our county that is increasing more than any other in terms of homelessness is the senior population, and there is a lack of housing for that population. Mental illness makes finding and keeping a home challenging, and also unrealistic expectations of the homeless and the mentally ill once they're housed also creates problems. It is unrealistic for us to think that once somebody is housed, they will then suddenly lead a drama-free, normal life, if you will. This slide is extremely teeny-tiny. I apologize for the small font. What this is is a point-in-time count. It's actually the point-in-time counts countywide for the last 12 years. So you can see each year by city how many homeless people were counted on our streets. One day in January, the point-in-time count is essentially volunteers going out into the community and counting the folks they see they think that are homeless. This methodology is troublesome, but it has gotten better each year. I attended your community discussion a couple Sundays ago here, and I think the number that was floated around for homeless in Thousand Oaks was about 200. Some of the existing housing resources that the county has for the mentally ill include 203 units countywide where we provide permanent supportive housing. We also have just over 30 what used to be called Section 8 vouchers, where we work with private landlords to accept subsidies for rent. We also contract with seven boarding care facilities, which includes two residential care facilities for the elderly. That number is down significantly over the last 10 years. We used to contract with 16 different boarding care facilities, and now we have contracts with only seven. And then the last bullet point on this slide is the No Place Like Home funding, which, again, was voter-approved. This was on our ballots last November. And basically, the state is funding housing for homeless and mentally ill through four rounds of funding. Round one was completed in January, and we're in the middle of round two as I speak. So the ballot initiative called-- what the state did was they took some of our Mental Health Services Act budget, and they earmarked a carve-out, so some of the money for housing for the homeless and mentally ill. But they didn't just give us that money back to build housing. What they did was they put it in a giant competitive pot for the entire state, all counties, to apply for. So the state was carved into four categories. There's the category that I call Too Big to Fail, which includes Los Angeles, San Francisco, San Diego, I think Santa Clara was the other county. Those counties were given money to do with what they will. Then the next category is the large county category, and that's the category that we're in. Ventura County is the smallest county within the large category of counties. So we're competing for $90 million statewide. The round two request for proposals is available now on the County of Ventura Behavioral Health website. I put the link there in the slide. You can see that. We also have $1.6 million in non-competitive funding available for communities to apply for somewhat over-the-counter funds where we can-- it's not enough funding to build any whole project, but it is available to offset some other costs for building housing. The eligible applicants for No Place Like Home funding are the County of Ventura. However, we don't build housing, so we partner with nonprofit developers. Some of those you know. Mini Mansions is one. Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation is another. Mercy House comes to mind, various housing authorities. There are many. Those are just a few. We could partner with Santa Barbara or LA County to build housing, but that option hasn't presented itself. And then the other requirement is that whomever we partner with to build this housing must have experienced buildings, affordable, and permanent supportive housing. The funding is available for bricks and mortar, so those bullet points, I think, are self-explanatory. The last bullet point, shared housing projects. Sounds great, but it's not what it seems, and the county will not entertain a shared housing project. Some of the other requirements for No Place Like Home projects. We use the Housing First Low Barrier Evidence-Based Model. The project must be a minimum of five units, and the funding will pay for a maximum of 49% of the total project. So basically, you have an affordable housing project, and within that project, No Place Like Home units are scattered throughout so that those folks can be integrated into the community. When I talk about affordable housing projects, we're talking 60% of the area median income. So we're talking entry-level policemen, teachers, firefighters. These are affordable housing projects with the earmarked units or restricted units scattered throughout. And then the other requirement is that we use the coordinated entry system for placing folks into these homes, and VCBH will be the lead service provider. Okay, I'm almost done. So this is the current funding timeline. As I said, there's $90 million available to build housing for the homeless and the mentally ill. The applications are due to the county on Friday, and then the final applications are due to the state in January, January 8th. And I can now answer any questions.
Thank you, Susan. Our last presentation-- Our last presentation, I'd like to welcome Five Star Theatricals artist, artistic director Patrick Cassidy to the podium to tell us about their upcoming production of The Music Man. And I'm going to go sit down and enjoy it, so.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. Thank you. Well, such a privilege to be here. Thank you, City Council, for seeing us. I have to tell you, after 15 months of being the artistic director for Five Star Theatricals, I am so honored to be here, to be a part of the community. I feel like I have friends here. Welcome Claudia Bill Delapena and your husband, Ron. They are friends of mine. Chief Tim Hagel. These are people that I now consider friends, and I am just privileged to be here. This facility, the Civic Arts Plaza, is celebrating their 25th anniversary here. Yeah, it's amazing. It's an incredible thing, and we at Five Star Theatricals are going to do an incredible honor on Saturday night with the two other resident companies, Pacific Festival Ballet and New West Symphony. We are all combining our talents to put on Hollywood to Stage and Back Again. It is Broadway musicals that have transferred to film, like The Music Man, Camelot, Rent, Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory, and the same thing with films that have gone to Broadway musicals. It's going to be an extraordinary event with 60-piece orchestra onstage, six of the greatest singers, including our headliner. He's Tony nominee for the show Rent on Broadway. He is starring for us for Five Star Theatricals in The Music Man, Adam Pascal. Get your tickets. It's a fundraiser. It's going to be an incredible event. Thank you. And then on October 18th, we are opening the 25th anniversary, 2019-20, with a show that was done here first 25 years ago by our company, and it is The Music Man. And I have a very personal connection with The Music Man because my mother Shirley Jones played Marion the Librarian in the movie. So it's an amazing thing for Five Star. Like I said, Adam Pascal is starring in that, and we have two incredible performers here that I think you all will enjoy. Our Winthrop is here. He's going to sing a piece called Gary, Indiana. And our Marion Catherine McDonough is here, and she's going to sing a bit of Till There Was You. Please welcome Joshua Blonde and Catherine McDonough. Mayor McCoy, thank you. City Council, thank you. Please come out, October 18th, and this Saturday, October 12th. And please embrace Five Star Theatricals because we are your resident company. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much. I met him before the meeting, and I could barely hear him speak, and then all of a sudden, he sings, and he just fills the room. What a wonderful gift. All right, Madam Clerk, if you would announce the public comments, please.
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. 12 individuals have presented cards, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker tonight is Sheriff Ayub. Welcome.
Well, good evening, Mayor McCoy, members of the council, Mr. Powers, city staff, members of the public. For the record, I'm Bill Ayub, sheriff of Ventura County. And I wanted to talk about some issues that have impacted the city and our organization over the past few weeks. As your council and many members of the public are aware, the sheriff's office has faced some negative media attention and criticism over this past week regarding the agency's withdrawal from participation in a charity flag football tournament, and allegations of politically charged words used by the city's police chief to communicate on the issue with the organizer. Those words and sentiments, as alleged, are not in line with the mission of the sheriff's office and will be addressed if true. But I want to be clear. The office of the sheriff is a nonpartisan position. The sheriff's office is a nonpolitical entity. We proudly serve the entire community, and we strive to do so in an objective way that helps to build trust and confidence in the work that we do. For that very reason, and for precisely that reason, we make every effort to avoid situations and conversations with political overtones. I also want to be very clear that our focus has been and continues to be on recovering from the horrific violence at the borderline and the devastating Woolsey fire that followed less than a day later. As the one-year anniversary approaches, we remain committed to helping with the healing of all those touched by these events, and that mission will not change. The men and women of the sheriff's office who serve the Thousand Oaks community as your police force work tirelessly to tamp down crime and to keep Thousand Oaks as one of the finest places anywhere to live, work, and play. And I know I speak on behalf of all the men and women that serve this community, and particularly on behalf of Chief Hagel, that we take great pride in serving as your police force. We love this city, and we are incredibly grateful for the support of the council and the community in all that we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Billy Martin, followed by Susan Weiniger. Good evening.
Good evening. I sure wish I could sing. Anyway, my name is Billy Martin, and I'm a Thousand Oaks lover, and I know all of you are, too. First, happy 25th and happy 45th. Recently, there was an article in the paper. I think it did the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza very much justice. But I was a little miffed when my concept for the copper curtain wall wasn't mentioned. So I figured I'd come up here and put in another pitch for it because I feel it's a timeless idea. It was presented in 2001, and since they haven't done anything else. And keep in mind, it's just my idea. The art was Joe Sibiri, the city's finest artist. Next to the Civic Arts Plaza, I envision a premier hotel that could be put behind the lakes, and it could be connected behind the Civic Arts Plaza to the parking structure, and it would feed into the lakes, and it would feed into the Civic Arts Plaza, and also the new downtown. And there was some talk of putting an arch for the new downtown on Erbs. I think that's the wrong location because 7-Eleven is never going anywhere, and neither is USA Gas. So I believe that the arch should come up to Conejo School Road. And as you come off of Hampshire, you would be looking into the lakes and the Civic Arts Plaza entering downtown. And on the other side of the arch, what I'd like to see is entering Old Town. I think it's time that we spend some of this discretionary income on another part of the boulevard and a part of the city that was here before we incorporated. I think they could use a little bit of a boost. They already have a very low vacancy rate. They've got over 25 international restaurants and markets. They've even got a Baskin Robbins. They've also got a park with an historic house and some of the finest oak trees in town. I have one final idea, and it's a little bit more towards the future. But the traffic on the freeways is never going to get any better, and Thousand Oaks happens to be in a great spot as a hub from the city of Los Angeles in the middle with Santa Barbara. And transportation is changing, and it's not going to change on the freeways. It's going to be up in the air. And I envision heliport/hub port for companies like Amazon, Uber, drone port with a central location that's more close to residential so that it makes sense. It would also be a wonderful corporate draw as well as tourist attraction, and it could be-- we could be on the cutting edge of the development, and I think that government funds would definitely be available for trying this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Susan Weiniger, followed by Madeleine Harris.
Good evening. I'm Susan Weiniger, and I do live in Thousand Oaks. I'm speaking tonight about the city's wireless ordinance.
Can you move to one of the mics or-- Can you move to one of the mics? Or, yeah, just, that'd be perfect so we can hear you. Just pull it down. There you go. Thank you.
Susan Weiniger, Thousand Oaks, City Ordinance Wireless. In August, the Wireless Infrastructure Association, the WIA, petitioned the FCC for a declarative ruling using our Thousand Oaks Wireless Ordinance as an example of what they wanted to be changed. They did this to strengthen their position on removing barriers to antenna and transmitter infrastructure investments. In their letter to the FCC on August 27th, they stated on page 18 that the city of Thousand Oaks considers remote radio units installed on a tower to be equipment cabinets, which the WIA considered to be a creative interpretation that defeated their intentions. I'm told that the city now is supposed to change the wireless ordinance by October 15th due to their complaint. If you are going to make alterations and modifications to the ordinance, now would be a good time to include protections for residents which are not currently in there, similar to other nearby cities, which we are all aware of and have discussed previously. There are many studies providing, approving that radio frequencies transmitting 24 hours a day, a few feet from us, and directed toward us will have an effect on us. It makes sense. Please protect us in ways that you have not done yet.
Thank you. Madeline Harris, followed by Yvette Mikulasek. Hello.
Hi, good evening. Hi, I'm Dr. Madeline Altman Harris. I live in Newberry Park, and I thank you for listening to us regarding the fifth generation. We're talking about the wireless here. I did want to say that this is a very remarkable group, and I appreciate everybody in the Council for listening and talking to us and being supportive of some of the changes that we're doing because Thousand Oaks has been a leader in what's going on across California and the United States. I'm requesting that you will put in no cell towers until it's an environmental impact studies are done. The environmental impact studies are not done at this time. As a doctor, I could tell you that the five, fifth generation is known to break down the blood-brain barrier. When you break down the blood-brain barrier, you're talking about mental illness, and when you talk about mental illness, you're talking about addiction, homelessness, everything that goes along with that. This is a dangerous technology that has been used in the military for certain reasons, which I know you've all been talked about. My other concerns are, besides the health impacts, well, including health impacts, are the metal. The metal, this is microwave radiation. As you know, you don't put metal into a microwave. In our bodies, we have metal in our teeth. We have, some people have doctor implants in their bodies and heart trans, you know, all these things made out of metal that will be affected by these things. Vaccinations have metal in them, and they get, they stay in the body. They find out all the aluminum in the brain, in the bones. These are things that are going to be affected by this microwave radiation. And these are things that I hear going on. These are not made up things. These are actual effects. And when they affect the brain, you can only do so much until you get away from this radiation, which sometimes takes people months or years to recover from. So I, please, please don't do this until all the environmental impact studies are done. And I thank you for listening. Thank you.
Thank you so much.[836.04][836.04](applause) Yvette, followed by Mandy Jacob. Good evening.
Good evening. Yvette Mikulasek.
Thank you.
Thousand Oaks. I'm here to talk about the 5G towers. I just quickly want to share experience with you that I had last week. My son was playing a soccer game at the Thousand Oaks Park near the Thousand Oaks High School. There is a 5G tower right there in the middle of the fields, right in between the fields where hundreds of children are playing the whole weekend. I was videotaping the game, and I was standing right by the tower, about five feet away, videotaping the midfielder, so I was, I couldn't move much. In about 30 minutes, I started feeling this incredible pain overpowering my body, and I was going to throw up, but I was, I was afraid I'm going to embarrass my son, so I was, I ran away and sat down. And after the game, my son came up to me, and he, he asked me, "Did you hear the high pitched noise all throughout the game?" And I said, "No, I didn't hear anything," because I didn't hear anything. And he, he heard it all the way until we walked to the car. Also, the, the members of the other team, the other players, were complaining about feeling tired and feeling sick. That was a team of academy players that were playing, downplaying in our bronze bracket, and they usually score 15 goals in our bracket. Last time, they scored 18 goals on us. This time, they scored one goal, and they were, I heard the boys saying, "I don't know what's wrong with me. I feel weird today." The other boys said, "I'm so tired." And I just went home, and I put it all together, and I just feel it's totally irresponsible to put these towers where children are playing. They're being put in parks, in, in the new park by Erbs, and I just don't feel it's, it's a nice way to treat our children. Thank you.
Thank you so much.[998.81][998.81](applause) Mandy Jacob, followed by Adam Haverstock. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me address you on behalf of Ventura County Issue Reform. You know, given that tonight is the onset of Yonkipo, there were a few people that haven't come, and obviously, a lot of the electromagnetically sensitive people are not here tonight. So I'm just going to summarize, because we haven't been here for most of the summer, what we've been up to. And obviously, with the new impetus of the WIA and the issue with the ordinance, there is a newfound energy here to, first of all, thank you for what you did, and hopefully just to continue in that vein. So what we have been doing, as you know, we've called ourselves Ventura County Issue Reform. We still haven't had time to change our name to California Issue Reform because now we're consulting with companies, organizations at grassroots levels all the way up to Marin County against the small cell facility rollouts. And one of the brags we'd like to have is about a few here in Ojai. We had one meeting with them, and the City Council there actually put in there that they are looking after the health of their residents, and they weren't the first. Malibu was the second, Beverly Hills, too. So there are cities coming out and worrying about the health of their residents because the scientific proof is out there, the National Toxicology Program by the US Government that was issued in January, saying that the DNA cells definitely are damaged on immediate contact with RF radiation. The other thing is also, we had one meeting with Westlake, and they went ahead, and we had asked them for three things in their amended ordinance, and they used two. The strongest one was that they are requiring a insurance liability on every single small cell facility that's put out of $2 million, at least $2 million. So that's going to see their seven-square-mile radius pretty safe, as well as a 500-foot setback, residential setback. So in that small amount of space, that gives them a really good standing. Going back now to Thousand Oaks, you know that we've got fantastic, we've got Trevor Marshall, who's part of the Bio Initiative, and then we've got Dr. Carol Takeda, who has written now, co-authored part of the Surgeon General's book, who has now stated that it takes about 10 years for the public to catch on to what the Surgeon General is saying, and she's saying that this is the new poison. RF is the new poison, and again, just backs up everything that the Bio Initiative says with DNA damage. So there is lots of scientific proof out there, and cities are moving towards that to talk about safety because they know that they can talk about it based on April 14th US Supreme Court ruling that you, the City Council, do have the policing power. And then, of course, the second case that's come out in our favor was the August 9th ruling, where, was done by the native Indians, but obviously, the FCC was struck down for arbitrary and capricious installations of their 5Gs. So there, there has been so much information that's come out in favor of us, and I know now our group has grown to 1,000, and we have 60 EMHS-sensitive people who are all covered under the ADA. So this problem is just going to get worse and worse, and we really appreciate you looking into it and trying to protect your residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1228.33][1228.33](applause)
Adam Haverstock, followed by Kizmeu Mohammed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, Adam Haverstock, Director of Government Affairs and Tourism at the Greater Conejo Valley Chamber of Commerce, just with a couple items for you tonight. First and foremost, this Friday is going to be the Chamber's Taste of Conejo. That is going to be at the Four Seasons Hotel from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. That's our annual food, wine, beer, and spirit festival. We're going to have over 100 vendors serving food, wine, beer, and spirits. It did sell out today, so if you didn't get your tickets yet, it is too late. Ask of a friend as extra. It's going to be a great time. It's, it's going to be wonderful. Second thing I wanted to mention was regarding the upcoming PGA Tour event. If you didn't know, the PGA Tour is going to be at the Sherwood Country Club, October 31st through November 3rd, and having one of their events, they do it on an annual basis. Visit Conejo Valley is a sponsor of that event, but we are, our sponsorship includes us going out and doing digital marketing in the greater Los Angeles area to golf enthusiasts and people that are interested in golf, to have them come up to Conejo Valley, stay in our hotels, and enjoy golf for the weekend. So we hope that's going to generate some demand. There's also going to be staff on site doing live social media posting, so that way we can generate some buzz about the event as well, and there's going to be significant TV coverage. So we think that's going to be some great positive exposure for the region. And then finally, I wanted to give a thank you to a couple of your staff members. That is Jay Spurgeon and Heather Cousin. This month, the Leadership Conejo program is going to include both a tour of the Thousand Oaks Library and also a bus tour with the Thousand Oaks Public Works Department to look at several of their facilities, including the Hill Canyon Wastewater Treatment Facility. And so I just wanted to give them a thank you to Jay and to Heather and to their teams for taking the time to show some community members around the facility. And unless there are any questions, that is concluded my comments for this evening.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.[1350.28][1350.28](applause)
Kizmeu, followed by Christine Rhodes. Good evening, sir.
My name is Kizmeu Mohammed, Thousand Oaks. I was going to say, every time, every time I open my mouth, somebody's feelings get hurt, I don't know why. I was going to say, I was thinking, like, bars should open until 4:00 AM in Thousand Oaks. And then I was thinking, what if Thousand Oaks was the first city that paid women more than men? You know? And then, next time a man and woman go on a date, the woman will pick up the check. Right? Yeah, some, okay, some people agree with me. Okay. And then I was, I was thinking, we all, we all know about the tragedy that happened at the borderline, which, which was terrible. So I was thinking, Thousand Oaks, they're the safest city in America, right? We have enough tax money to buy that property and turn it into a memoriam, right? In honor of those young people who lost their lives, right? So, and then, so we call it Dear Loved Ones, and then we, we build it, we open it, the city will buy it, and we hang up pictures of those people. We honor them, and we show their dreams, and, because, you know, that was, that was tragedy. I mean, if you guys, if we want to go farther, we can honor anybody who we lost in the massive shooting in Southern California, because we can't honor everybody across America, because we'll run out pictures to hang on the wall. But I was thinking, Thousand Oaks has enough money to do that, so why not? You know, let's, let's honor those people. And, and I'm, and like I was saying, like, you know, if Thousand Oaks becomes the first city, I don't know, we can do, we can do it maybe for a month, like, you know how they have Breast Cancer Month? What if we, for that month, we paid women more than men? And we'll be the first city in the world, in America, to pay women more than men, and we'll be on Allen, we'll be, we'll be everywhere, you know? And also, I was going to say, a wise man once said to a lesbian woman, "You can't spell happiness without a penis." And that wise man was me, and, you know, I was 18 at the time, you know, I matured since then, and then, I think that we can all mature and grow as people. So I say, Thousand Oaks, we're going to come back from that tragedy. Thank you.
Thank you.[1528.21][1528.21](applause) Christine Rhodes, followed by Vadim Monzos. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I'll start off by saying I'm not very prepared, but I'm very passionate, and I hope that that comes through in the short time I'm going to take. I'm going to be speaking about, kind of, in regards to the 5G discussion. I'm going to ask a question, and I hope this provokes everyone to think about this, is, do you feel 100% certain, or are you, that 5G will not cause any biological damage to children? And if the answer I ask, if the answer is not 100% sure, then I think everyone here should question how we move forward with making a technology like this ubiquitous across Thousand Oaks. I have a one-year-old and a three-year-old, and it's unfortunate, as a technologist, that I have to worry about this. I live in Dos Fiantos, and recently, a new tower just sprung up out of nowhere, and I'm one of the few people that can recognize the symptoms with the actual cause of the symptoms, because I've informed myself, I've educated myself. Not everyone is doing that. And as a technologist, maybe I'm ahead of the game there, that I know that there are other things than the basic, what did I eat today? What did I drink today? Who was I around? Am I sick? I look into it a little bit deeper, and I think we've, we have a lot of other people here that are looking in this deeper. And there's a lot of science out there that people could dismiss because this is, even for me, one of the most inconvenient truths that there are here. And I love technology, but it's at a cost, and we need to evaluate those costs before we move forward and build this infrastructure around our children, around our parks, around our homes. I really ask you guys to take a look at this. And while we might not have conclusive evidence on the science side about this, we have quite a bit of, of evidence to suggest there is a probable cause of cancers, of infertility issues, and others. I have symptoms, like I said, and with that all said, I think we should all step back and consider that before we move forward, or this is going to be like the cigarettes of the 70s. Thank you.
Thank you.[1663.88][1663.88](applause) You may have felt unprepared, but you did great. Vadim, followed by Heather Swanson.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. My name is Vadim Monzos. I'm a local resident in Newberry Park and local beekeeper. As you know, I've been coming to the city for over six months now to update you on the life of the bees. I have told you that the hives that I built the Faraday cage for have thrived. In fact, I get, I'm collecting honey now, and I see tremendous difference. So it's a reflection of the hive's health, if they can produce almost twice as much as a hive which is not protected by Faraday cage. Also, as far as I know, Thousand Oaks has been named Bee City of the Year. Am I right?
Yes.
So then, if you have been named that, why are we, why are we happy to let small cell towers be implemented without asking a question of why the hives are dying off? And as you know, it's been, like, three times I offered at my huge expense, you know, a few of my hives to be placed under small cell facilities to do experiment, and if I'm wrong, you know, we all will see and confirm. But if I'm right, that it will be clear indication. By the way, it doesn't take long. It takes just probably a few short weeks, or maybe maximum couple of months. So please, our city needs to stop and do an environmental impact study. And also, I found out that on August 9th, the DC Court of Appeals struck down the FCC's, quote, "arbitrary and capricious acts of installing the small cell facilities," and the US Supreme Court ruled in favor of City of San Francisco against T-Mobile, saying that the local municipalities have the policing power over the telecoms. You have this power. We really are begging you to at least put everything on hold. We really are begging you to at least put everything on hold, and you have the legal authority from the two highest courts of the United States. Please exercise your rights, protect our bees, protect our trees, protect our people. Don't let the face of Thousand Oaks be changed forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Vadim. Heather Swanson, followed by Anne Marie Winnick. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Heather Swanson. I am a 35-plus-year resident of Thousand Oaks, Newbury Park community. I have five children I've raised in this community, ages 10 to 25. I'm one of five siblings that have also been raised for the last 35 years in this community. So, I do have a big stake here. I feel that it's a beautiful community, as we're all very fortunate to reside here. This is a, the 5G is a particular issue that has struck a chord with me. It is alarming that it is being rolled out on a national level. I am doing my part to, trying to do my part to prevent the rollout in our community. It has already basically gone further than I believe that it, that it should. There are not sufficient longitudinal studies which need to be completed. There is an abundance of, I have a collection of websites, the Cell Phone Task Force, the cancer.gov, govtech.com, healthimpactnews.com. A plethora, really, of studies, the ehtrust.org, have studies that have been shown with just alarming evidence showing that these larger waves, which actually are emitted by the 5G-modified small cell towers, modifications to many light poles that have already been done in our community. I'm still trying to determine, I've requested it before through emails to the, to the city and so forth, to request verification as, or clarification as to whether our city has approved these installations. They're on Borchard Road, they're next to my son's school at Sequoia, they're at Newbury Park High School to my other son, they're Walnut Elementary, my other son. And they've just been placed at Dos Fiantos Park, where my son plays soccer every weekend, and it is where he practices under at Borchard Park every weekend. I want verification, I've requested, respectfully requested, verification that those have been authorized by our city, those installations. And I have not received that confirmation. And so, you know, it's really a matter of just really clarifying that those have been authorized, our tax dollars, you know, that have paid for them. You know, I want to be able to track where that authorization is coming from, because if it is a matter of the FCC basically infringing on our local rights, then that is, you know, the path of recourse. And if it is the city that's authorizing and approving these installations, then that is, is the path of recourse. So, I, as well, second the motion for an environmental impact study. Anything that we can do to basically halt, slow down, set back the requirements for these 5G installations that are impacting our children. My son as well, has just tonight, you know, he's having stomach aches, you know, I, I don't know, of course, you can't draw a clear correlation, but my daughter had extreme headaches after she came from, actually had not been in this area. She came from her internship in San Diego, and she went to his soccer game.
Miss Swanson, we have to, we're way over time, so.
Okay. So, what I'm saying is, I am requesting that the city do whatever that they can to basically halt and slow down the 5G installations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anne Marie Winnick, followed by Bruce Boyer. Good evening.
Hello. This letter is on behalf of Rebecca and John Tatum, 17-year residents of Newbury Park. We have eight cell towers and 11 antenna within two miles of our home now. That is a distance that is significant, since just one cell tower will radiate up to two miles. We have removed from our home all smart technology and Wi-Fi. Our cellphone Wi-Fi was turned off, and it remains in use, but on airplane mode often. There is a tremendous difference in our home due to the changes we have made, which was not easy. Once you invite smart technology into your home, the companies who provide these services, like TV, phone, and internet, are remiss to remove it. Now, we bring that up, because as two individuals who are EMF-sensitive, there is no choice but to remove yourself from electrosmog or suffer illnesses and eventually early death, period. This also costs us a great deal of time and also money to make our home safe. Here is why I'm writing to you, my Thousand Oaks City Council. The approval for two cell towers within 1,500 feet of our home will change everything. That radiation at that close range, 24/7, will make our lives here impossible. We will have no choice but to move. Move! My husband is on hospice, and I am disabled. I am his 24/7 caregiver, but moving is the only option if we want to even survive. He is 72, and I am 62, and we have to pack and move. Our HRA will make money, having a 10-year lease on each cell tower, and they will pocket the money. We will not get a discount. We did not even get a vote on the issue. We currently live in a rent-controlled senior park that has not been watched very closely, because we pay close to $1,000 a month in rent, when we were promised it would not exceed our baseline of less than 700 due to rent control. We were duped. Now, being duped is one thing. Having towers here is another. But even a third issue is that now they, our HRA, know we're fighting the towers. They, our HRA, will not provide any service to our home, even though it is needed and paid for, and it is their duty to perform it. They simply don't. We are not sorry one bit for fighting for the health and welfare of all living things in Thousand Oaks. We will pay the price for speaking truth. Just know how difficult life has become, when we worked hard, paid off our home, and intended to retire at Newbury Park. However, our retirement is far from safe, miles from peaceful. My guess is, and this is as respectful as I can be in this situation, that not one of your homes, members of the City Council, is due for a cell tower above your home. You, at the minimum, know that would not be a good idea, as does our HRA manager, who doesn't even live here. He lives in another community entirely, yet we are left paying a grant to be treated out of proper management of our issues, and to be radiated at every corner from every direction, 24/7, with the approval of those in charge. What a travesty of justice. What a nightmare. Welcome to my world, and please understand the fear, the heartache, and the disappointment in management that we are suffering.
Thank you, Ms. Winnick.
It is time for a change. May God help us all. Thank you, Rebecca Tatum.
Thank you. Bruce Boyer, followed by Cole Troxler. Bruce Boyer first, and then Cole. Sorry, man.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Boyer, candidate for sheriff here in Ventura County. 10 months ago, we had 12 people killed at the borderline. Anybody seen any answers or any reports? Maybe we could ask this gentleman up here. Billy Yube, why? There's no reports.
You can direct your comments to the council.
I am directing them at you, sir, and I'm also referencing the man who is present, who has the reports that I am asking for. And I'm asking the City Council, who has the ability to issue legislative subpoenas, why you have not demanded the reports? Why the county is holding a mental health task force? Now, this is a county body, but yet it is immune from the Brown Act. There are no public meetings for us to attend. There are no agendas. There are no reports. Everything is kept secret. What are they hiding? You, as the City Council, are helping them hide it, which begs the question, what is the City Council hiding? How is it that these people who needed to get out had to jump 14 feet? Where is the fire escape? That does lead one to believe, who signed off on the plans for the certificate of occupancy for the restaurant, where if somebody had to get out the back, because there was a fire, or a guy shooting people at the front, they had to jump 14 feet off the ground? You're looking at 11 wrongful death lawsuits. Is that why the reports are being concealed? I listened to a newscast where this fellow, the acting sheriff, told us that there were eight officers in the borderline when shots were fired. Eight off-duty officers. And they all ran? I don't think Chief Hagel would have run if he was in there. But I don't understand how you can have eight officers, and they hear gunshots, and they run. There were two on-duty police officers in there, according to Chief of Police Whitney from Oxnard PD, who said he had two on-duty officers in there. How do you have shots fired, and two on-duty officers run and leave those kids to be executed? Why am I asking the questions instead of you people? You should be demanding answers from these people. It's our neighbors that were killed, and you are not asking them the questions that we need the answers for. How does that happen? 10 cops, and they all run. Nobody fired a shot. Now Sergeant Heelus, he went in by himself. How is it that he goes in by himself, and there are two CHP officers at the door who don't go in? Is that correct tactics? Is that cowardice? I'd like some answers. Now, we're told that Sergeant Heelus, after being shot multiple times by the killer, was struck and killed by a round fired from the CHP officer accidentally. Is this tactics? Who's training these people? They have an officer down inside the borderline with who knows how many people shot and bleeding out, and they stood outside for over 20 minutes and let every one of them bleed out, including Sergeant Heelus?
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. Cole, you're up.
Hey, how's it going? This is like one of the first times I've ever done something like this, so sorry if I'm a little nervous.
It's all right.
My name is Cole. I'm 18 years old. I went to Newbury Park High School. And I'm here talking about 5G. I'm actually electro-sensitive, and I can feel the signals in my hand, and I can actually hear high-pitched frequencies when I go next to 5G routers. One of my friends is actually in the hospital for this. He went to go get something removed from Valencia, brain cyst. And then, now he found out he has two more tumors in his brain. He has to go to Las Robles. His name's Sebastian Roy. He can't make it today, because he's at the hospital. But I have a problem with this technology personally, because I believe that is unconstitutional, and it violates laws that we created all the way back in World War II. This is human experimentation. There has been experimentation, the LA Times did something on it. It showed that rats got tumors from this technology. Why are we letting something like this be deployed? Isn't that human experimentation? Like, at the end of the day, you guys are the ones who are going to have to go to sleep at night, knowing that you might have screwed the next generation. But that's just me. That's just my personal belief. And I believe, there's a lot of things. I know the Fire Department actually agrees with this, too, because San Francisco actually just did a thing about their firefighters, about their effects on 5G. And I know that LA County did, and that was all the way back in 2G, reporting neurological damage. Who knows what this is doing to our bodies? I don't. But I know what the science and the peer-reviewed literature has said, and from what that said, it is harmful and dangerous. There are things called like active denial technology. It's actually a military technology for crowd control. And it's the same thing that 5G uses. It's radio millimeter waves. I know this sounds crazy, but just do the research for yourself, because where I got this was from the Department of Defense website. And all this stuff is very real, and it's very out there. And I know you guys are like, oh, these are the FCC laws, they're federal. Well, then, why did California legalize weed? Because weed was federally illegal. Why can't we do the same thing with 5G and make it our own choice, bring it into our own hands? That's all.
Cole, you may have been nervous, but you were very articulate. Good job, man. Yeah, Mr. Powers.
Thanks so much, Mayor McCoy. Just a couple quick comments, since we haven't responded to 5G of late, just for any of the body that's new in the audience on this particular topic. We obviously do recognize this is an emotional issue for some of you. Regardless of how you feel about the issue, it's not the purview of this City Council. They do not set federal telecommunications policy, nor do they govern nor support 5G. FCC regulations that many of you spoke about tonight, they affect every single city in America, not just Thousand Oaks, not just Camrio, but every city in America. So, if you reference health impacts, and without going into detail on that, you can read, read up on our website at tox.org/wireless, the fact that the FCC specifically disallows that from being something that's considered by local entities. Many of you mentioned this, and I encourage you to continue to focus on it. The path of recourse is the FCC. FCC sets this policy, and that is where you can have an impact. To be clear, some of you mentioned current installations. There are currently no small cell or 5G installations in our community. Under our new ordinance, nothing has been approved or processed, period. And that's a fact. As one speaker mentioned, the wireless industry actually utilized our ordinance. And for those of you that don't think that our ordinance is written to the strictest possible measure within the law, they actually used our ordinance in a petition to the FCC in saying that this is a city overstepping its boundaries. So, our ordinance was the model ordinance that the wireless industry put forward as one that is an overreach. So, as, it's an important point for all of you that are, that are contending that this City Council is not doing the best of its ability within the confines of the law. Speakers mentioned a couple cases. I'll let the attorney Noonan mention those. Tox.org/wireless. As I mentioned on the outset, I know this is an emotional issue for many of you. Regardless of how you feel about it, it's not the purview of this council. It's the purview of the FCC, and I encourage you to continue your efforts and focus there. We certainly are. And I know City Attorney Tracy Noonan will mention that we have recently even filed a petition to keep the pressure on the FCC on this issue.
Yes, thank you. Just, just to kind of follow up with the city manager's comments, again, the FCC did specifically mention the city of Thousand Oaks is a city that they believe our ordinance actually impacts their ability, that we've overstepped what the federal regulations allow. In response, however, the city has joined with other cities in opposition to this recent FCC filing. But this recent FCC filing, I think one of the speakers indicated that we needed to make changes to our ordinance based on that FCC filing, and that's not, that's not accurate. We don't need to make any changes to it. It's also really important for you all to know that the FCC is actually considering additional regulations, taking away even more local control. So, it's really important for everyone who has concerns over these FCC regulations to contact your federal legislators opposing any additional FCC regulations. It's also important for me to remind the public, in case you weren't here when we were talking about it some months back, that the 1996 Telecommunications Act, and that was federal legislation, not FCC regulations, this is federal regulation, federal legislation. It was passed in 1996. That is the legislation that took away, that took away all cities' ability to consider health impacts from RF emissions. They specifically granted all aspects with respect to health, and RF emissions were delegated to the FCC, and that happened back in 1996. So, the only entity that can change that is the federal government. So, if, if, you know, as, as the city manager indicated, there's, there's a lot of passion with respect to the concerns over the health and safety and welfare of our families and our children and our, and our residents. Those, those concerns, we really need to be focusing that attention on the federal, on our federal legislators. We've not received any communications for persons, from persons over concerns about coming to City Council meetings. You know, I've indicated in past City Council meetings, we do have a process in place. If anyone seeks assistance, they just need to call the City Clerk's Office. However, to date, no one has requested the city to provide this. Finally, there was a mention by a couple of speakers as to an August 9th ruling and a California Supreme Court ruling. But my office has been working with our consultant, and we've also personally reviewed those cases. One of the cases basically says that you can consider aesthetic impacts. It has nothing to do with RF emission safety, just aesthetic impacts, which has no bearing on our ordinance. The other one, the, the August 9th ruling dealt with the consideration of location requirements on Native American sites. And that case, although it doesn't have any impact on our ordinance, I will tell you that from my perspective, and from other attorneys' perspectives, and other cities' perspectives, we're hopeful that the language in that case can be used in the lawsuit that's been challenged in the Ninth Circuit. So, we will definitely keep you posted on that. Again, go to our website for updated information. We're hopeful that this August 9th ruling will help the cities in their challenge of the FCC regulations, but it doesn't necessitate any changes to our ordinance at this time. And that's all I have.
Thank you. That brings us to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve? Councilmember Angler?
Yes, I would move to...
Yes, I would move to approve the consent calendar as posted.
Madam Clerk, will you formulate the vote, please? Thank you.
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Folks, thanks for coming out tonight to speak, we appreciate it. We now move on to item 8, Public Hearing, 2019 Triennial Water Quality Public Health Goals Report. Paul Jorgensen, Water Quality Supervisor, welcome.
Mayor, if I could quickly open the hearing.
Please.
Advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A regarding the 2019 Triennial Water Quality Public Health Goals Report, and a speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council. And at this time, we do not have any public speakers.
Thank you. You gotta turn on your speaker there.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the public. I am Paul Jorgensen, the Water Quality Supervisor in the Public Works Department.
Okay. You gotta fix your microphone.
Start over.
Please do.
Okay, I'm here to present on the Public Health Goals Report, which is related to the drinking water quality that the city provides to its water customers. I'm joined by Jay Spurgeon, Public Works Director, and John Meekle, Utility Superintendent, Public Works Department. The Public Health Goals Report, this is a report that is state law and is unique to California. The requirement is to report on non-enforceable public health goals every three years. This entails submitting a report to the state and holding a public hearing. The goals are developed by the state and federal EPA without taking into account treatment costs or the cost to purchase water. But enforceable standards do take these into account. The city's annual water quality reports on enforceable levels can be found on the link that's on the slide. In the last three years of water quality reports, we're used to prepare this report. This table summarizes the report. The first column, it shows the seven constituents that were detected above these public health goals. The second column shows the units of measurement. The third column shows the enforceable standards, which, when they're developed, do take into account health risks, treatment feasibility, treatment costs, and the cost of providing water. The fourth column shows the levels at which these constituents were detected. As you can see, there's a lot of them that has the ND there, so over the last three years of water quality data reviewed, there was times where those constituents were not detected, but there were times where it was. And the times that they were, you can see that they were well below the enforceable standards. On the fifth column is the public health goals themselves, and a lot of those are set to zero, if not close to zero. The last column shows the source of these constituents, and most of them are from natural deposits as the water travels from Lake Orville through the Delta to Cass Lake Lake and then to the Jensen Treatment Plant. The report conclusions are all enforceable drinking water standards are met consistently year after year. The city does not have treatment facilities to further reduce these constituents that were detected above public health goals. Further treatment is costly and could have negative impacts on other constituents. No further action is required or needed at this time. The recommendations are accept public comment and receive the report. Thank you for your time, and I can take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Counsel, does it appear we have any questions? Oh, I spoke too soon. Councilmember Engler.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, can you go a little bit into the enforceable, non-enforceable language there? It's a little confusing, I think, especially to the general public. What does enforceable mean? What does non-enforceable mean?
Sure. So the enforceable standards are the ones that are developed to ensure safety of water supply, but also make the water affordable and the treatment is feasible. The non-enforceable, which are these public health goals, are there is zero health risk associated at those levels, which you saw a lot of are zero. But treatment down to zero is difficult with analytical techniques, a lot of times you can't get to zero. But they set these goals to show that there is zero health risk after drinking water for your entire lifetime at those levels. Where the enforceable goals are, there's a very small health risk over a lifetime of drinking the water. But it's still, it's safe and it's... Let's see. So the enforceable goals, they are the ones that if we do go over those limits, then we do have to notify the state immediately where the public health goals, if we do go over those, like these ones here, we only have to report on those every three years because there's no health risk associated with it.
So in terms of the non-enforceable, these are goals that the, pretty much the state has given us, but they're not enforceable in terms of needing to meet those goals, as simply a goal to try to achieve?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Protam, Adam?
Care to make a motion?
Okay, let's see if that was the same desire of Councilmember Bill de la Peña.
It was not. I have a question.
Question away.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. I wanted to follow up on what Councilmember Engler touched upon. So the public health goals, the so-called PHGs, are set by Sacramento?
Some of them are set by the State Office of Environmental Health and Hazard Assessment. So it's a state agency, and then if they aren't developed by the state, they're developed by the federal EPA.
And if we cannot reach those goals due to lack of funding perhaps, is it then still realistic to have those goals, or should those goals be changed?
They probably should be changed. It is kind of an oddity of a goal, of a regulation, where again, to treat down to zero, if you treat one constituent down to zero, then almost everything will be treated down to zero. So now you'll have pure water essentially, which also isn't healthy for, it's aggressive water, so you'd have to add minerals back to it. So having goals set at zero, yeah, is not very practical.
What can we do, the city of Thousand Oaks, to perhaps see or trigger changes regarding the PHGs?
We could contact the state, our state Drinking Water Division engineer and carpenterya and ask them what recourse we can do to make some changes to this.
Is that something that is realistic?
Maybe I'll jump in because I know Mr. Spurgeon looks like he wants to jump in as well. You know, one of the consistent challenges with regulatory frameworks like this is practicality. And, you know, you saw it when we dealt with the stormwater permit, right? Consistently, the concept is further ratcheting down and assuming that everything is dirty and needs to be ratcheted down. But there does become some diminishing returns associated with the cost associated, and when you're, in all truth, dealing with extremely clean, safe stormwater and water in this particular case. So I'll let Jay add to that.
Well, and I would agree, it's really a matter of practicality. Some of these goals are actually set below detection technology. We can't even, we can't even measure down that low. So you're kind of doing what we do, which is we wonder, why are these there? What good do they really do? And from the city of Thousand Oaks making an impact on these, I would say that these are not out there to, they're only required for us to address this every three years. That's actually, we're the only state that even requires that. The goals are there nationwide, we're the only state that has to come forward and do a public hearing like this, where at best, we're trying to explain something that's not necessarily that clear.
Well, thank you very much for trying to answer the question. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Since we do have a motion, we need to close the hearing first. So Madam Clerk, if you would close the hearing.
I'll close the hearing.
All right, we have a motion, we prepare the vote.
Well, how do I, Mayor? I'm just gonna say that the takeaway of this whole thing is that the water here in Thousand Oaks is safe, very safe. I'm drinking it right now.
Hear, hear.
It exceeds all state and federal requirements for safe drinking water. There's no enforceable levels of contaminants. And we import all our water, basically our water, from Metropolitan Water District. They test the water, then it goes to Keyagis, they test the water, then it goes to us, and we test the water. So it's tested three times, and as you said, Jay, we're the only state in the Union that requires a triennial report like this. So rest assured, ladies and gentlemen, we have very safe drinking water. And with that, I will move that we accept the Triennial Water Quality Public Health Goals Report.
Well done, Mayor Protam. Madam Clerk, the vote?
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item 9, Department Report, Wastewater and Water Financial Plans, Proposed Rate Adjustment. Sherry Johnson, Revenue Operations Manager, welcome.
This discussion is for our biannual water wastewater rate study. Joining me on the dais is Jay Spurgeon, Public Works Director, Jamie Boscarino, Finance Director, and Sanjay Ghar from Raftellus Financial Consultants. Raftellus is the firm that has prepared our wastewater water financial plans for the last several years. For your consideration and approval, our utility financial plans, a request is set at a public hearing in December, and proposed rate adjustments, which would go into effect February of 2020 and January of 2021. Financial plans are updated every two years and a cost of service study every four to five years, alternating between wastewater and water. The purpose of these studies is to perform a comprehensive review of the city's utility funds, operating and capital budgets, look at the cost of imported water, and determine appropriate revenue and rate adjustments. This year's financial plans and study were prepared by Raftellus, and they provide the basis for the proposed utility rates in calendar years 20 and 21. Let's take a closer look at the wastewater fund. A brief snapshot of our wastewater rate adjustment history shows only marginal increases to the fund in recent years. The wastewater financial plan proposes a 1% adjustment per year. Here you see the wastewater reserve fund. Wastewater reserve funds are primarily derived from rates. These funds are set aside to meet operational, emergency, and capital needs. The total of the wastewater reserve fund is approximately 26 million. The only outstanding wastewater debt is the State Water Resources Control Board loan, and the good news is that that fund will be debt-free in 2023. You may recall that wastewater revenue bonds were paid off early in 2018. The wastewater CIP approved just this past June has an average expenditure of 6.4 million per year for the next five years. A 1% revenue adjustment would enable the city to more effectively build reserves and to incur no debt as a result of our expenditures. Under the proposed financial plan, ending balances for wastewater are projected to exceed reserve targets in all years. An increase of 1% for each of these years would have a minimal impact on our residential customers. This increase translates to a 28 cent increase for residential customers in 2020 and 30 cents in 2021. Currently, at $29.30 per month, the city has the second lowest wastewater rate in the county. The next highest is 11 dollars more. In addition to the wastewater financial plan, a wastewater cost of service study was performed. This analysis provided a basis to examine and equitably distribute the recommended 1% revenue adjustment across the various wastewater customer classes. Only minor adjustments are proposed. The current wastewater structure was developed in 2013 and consists of a monthly fixed service charge per equivalent residential unit based on customer class. These ERUs allow for normalized billing amongst various customer classes by estimating wastewater flows and assumed strength. Moving on to water. When we evaluate the water rate adjustment history, we see larger adjustment percentages each year. This is primarily due to the ever-increasing cost of imported water. You may recall that the 2019 adjustment of 2% shown here on this slide was less than the 2017 proposed financial plan adjustment. In fall of last year, council lowered rates based on the actual imported water rates being less than originally projected. The water financial plan recommends a 1% adjustment to fixed and commodity rates plus a pass-through adjustment, resulting in the proposed 3% and 4% adjustments you see here. So let's look a little closer at the water fund. Similar to wastewater, water enterprise reserves are set aside to meet operational, emergency, and capital needs. The total reserve is approximately 28 million. The water CIP, also approved this last June, has an average expenditure of 8.7 million per year for the next five years. An adjustment would enable the city to more effectively build reserves and incur no debt as a result of our CIP expenditures. You may notice that there are substantial capital projects planned for fiscal year 2021. One of those projects includes the Thousand Oaks Groundwater Utilization Project estimated at 14.2 million. So let's look at the pass-through cost. The city's wholesale water supply cost is about 17 million per year and is the most significant cost driver to city water rates. City water is delivered by the Keyagis Municipal Water District, and historically, they've raised their rates 3% to 5% per year. The proposed pass-through rate would be applied to all commodity rates. As you see here, the city pass-through rate is less than the Keyagis rate increase. This is because our cost of imported water only accounts for almost 70% of our water budget, therefore, it doesn't impact our ratepayers to the full extent. This chart created by Keyagis Municipal Water District shows the cost of imported water, the most significant impact to our water rates, which is expected to increase at about 3% to 4% per year. This helps to explain why pass-through rates are expected to increase. Similar to wastewater, the water fund is projected to remain in good standing. The chart you see here shows the recommended 1% increase in the fixed meter base rate and shows how monthly fixed fees would be minimally impacted. Most residential customers have a 5'8" meter. This shows how a 1% revenue adjustment plus the recommended pass-through adjustment would affect single-family residential commodity tiered rates. The city's average water residential customer compares favorably to other water providers in our area. Agencies with lower water costs reflect differences in local water supply such as groundwater, which is much less expensive than imported water. Lastly, the image you see here demonstrates how low, moderate, and high-usage bills would be impacted. An average residential customer using 13 units per month with a 5'8" meter would be minimally impacted at a cost of just over $2 per month. So here is a summary of the next two years. The good news is that no major nor unexpected revenue adjustments are needed. We are proposing only a 1% rate increase for the next two years, plus a 2% to 3% pass-through rate for imported water costs. Should council accept these financial plans, cost of service study, and proposed rate adjustments, then a public hearing shall be scheduled for December 10. Our recommendations are included here and the staff report. Staff is available if you have any questions.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. I have a quick question. The proposed rates, are they the ones that are being used in the weight rate comparison chart to other cities? Are those the proposed rates?
No, those are the existing rates.
Those, okay. And after the proposed rates take effect... And after the proposed rates take effect, how would the city of Thousand Oaks compare to the other purveyors?
So I actually ran that, and it falls just about in the exact same placement where it is right now.
Okay.
Quite a few of those agencies have adjustments anticipated.
Because I know California Water Service is going to up, go up significantly, if, if I recall correctly. But we do have our water rate guru sitting right here. Guru, yes.
I don't know about guru, but both of the other two major water purveyors in the city, California American Water and Cal Water Service Company, are in their rate cases as well. They do theirs every three years. Cal Water Service, which serves Westlake and North Ranch, they filed last year in July. And Cal-Am, which serves primarily Newbury Park, kind of the western part of the city, filed just this past July for their rate case. So those are going forward, and they each have different proposals at this time. Those will play out over the next year or two, and we'll certainly report back as, as those decisions come down. But, um, yes, their, their rates, their water costs will go up as well in those service areas.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, madam?
I had a motion.
Love it.
Uh, just, uh, I have to say, we are great wastewater treaters. I'm telling you. Hill Canyon's incredible. We treat Guru Spurgeon, what do we treat? 10 million gallons a day, is it?
Oh, actually, uh, less than that, 8 million.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And the wastewater guru is actually sitting right up there. That's John Minko right there.
But we treat it, and it's so pure, and it's so clean, that it flows out into a creek out in front of Hill Canyon. It redoubles the groundwater, farmers draw from it, and flows all the way to the ocean. So we do a great service for the, for the region. And this is a very good example of what good planners the city of Thousand Oaks are. Unlike some cities that get behind on this and all of a sudden have to raise the rates precipitously, we stay up with it every year. We make incremental raises to take into account our capital improvements that we need and to recover our costs. But we never, you know, um, uh, raise rates precipitously so it really impacts the residents. And I'll just say one other quick thing. As I mentioned earlier, we report, um, we import 100% of our water, about 95% of it, from Metropolitan Water District. But we are very close to working on, finishing that well in, uh, in the golf course that draws on our groundwater that the cattle ranchers used to do decades ago. So now that groundwater is all filled up. It's within three feet of the surface, three feet of the surface. So we're going to start to draw on that. We have to clean it up a little bit, but it could very well give us about 10% of our water supply. So that's an exciting, uh, move coming forward. Anyway...
Great motion, very lengthy.
You love that motion, huh, Mayor?
Madam Clark, will you prepare the vote?
Well, I have to...
No, too late. Let's vote.
I made the motion.
Very interesting thoughts, and appreciative. All right, that brings us to, uh, item B.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. I saw the picture, I figured I'd assume it. All right, uh, item 8B, Residential Capacity Allocation and Initiation of General Plan Amendment for Project at 1872 Newbury Road. Mark Towne, Community Development Director, take it away.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, you have before you a request to allocate residential capacity to a project site located at 1872 Newbury Road. And specifically, the request before you is three-parted. First is to allocate 218 dwelling units, citywide Measure E residential capacity, to the concept for you. Second, and related to that, if you do opt to allocate such, uh, capacity, then staff has recommended that you initiate a general plan amendment to change the land use, which I will talk about momentarily. And then finally, to allow concurrent processing of entitlements with legislative actions. So this image, uh, shows the, the subject site. It is, as you can see, on the south side of the 101 freeway, generally located between Orchard Road to the west and Ventu Park Road to the east. More specifically, the property is a 9.7-acre piece of land located at southeast corner of East Kelly Road and Newbury Road, immediately south of the 101 freeway. This image, uh, shows the, uh, development pattern, uh, on and nearby the property, at least, uh, as of about, uh, probably two years ago. You can see to the west, uh, here, there's a commercial center. This is the Kohl's Department Store that anchors that, that, uh, property. And then to the east is another commercial center. And then to the south, uh, as I think the council well knows, there is a residential, uh, community, uh, very densities. Should also point out just quickly, this, this dark line up here is a sound wall along the south side of the 101 freeway. That sound wall is, uh, will remain, uh, regardless of what goes on this property going forward. This is a recent image photo of the site looking southwest from Newbury Road. This site was previously used, most recently used by the, uh, uh, Canoe Valley Unified School District for a continuation of high school and for a maintenance yard. Just for reference, as we look southwest, these are the historic buildings that we'll also talk about in a few minutes. This is an image, uh, looking due east from East Kelly Road. Obviously, the, uh, the maintenance, uh, yard facility, improvements have all been removed from the site. Another, uh, unique aspect to this property is that it, uh, is a location of the Timber Schoolhouse and Auditorium. These were designated by City Council as, uh, a local historical landmark in 2004. They were designated as a landmark for several reasons. As, as noted in this image, they comprise the oldest original school and public building in the Canoe Valley with the, uh, schoolhouse dating back to 1924 and the auditorium dating back to 1948. The school itself was attended by children of many early settlers in the area, including the Kelly family itself, for whom the adjacent street is named. And also, the buildings were the work of a prominent architect. In fact, Ventura County's first architect who, who designed a number of notable structures in the, uh, in the county, including Libby Bowl and the, uh, City of Ventura's City Hall. So a little bit of background, uh, it's really been about a solid two-year process to get to this point tonight. Back in, uh, 2015, City Council changed the zoning and general plan land use from institutional, because of the school district use, to commercial. However, since approximately, uh, early 2017, a variety of commercial concepts have been, uh, delineated by the applicant, have been evaluated by staff. None of those commercial concepts, uh, according to the applicant, has, uh, or did move forward. And so the conclusion was reached that really a mix of commercial and residential is the most appropriate and viable use for the property. And the actual project before you, the concept, uh, based on that conclusion was submitted in late May. So, let's talk about the concept. It's pretty straightforward. It's composed of essentially three parts. So the first part is the residential component that comprises 210 apartments. Of those, there would be 26 set aside for, uh, those with, uh, affordable income, uh, limits. And also, the unit mix would include studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms. About two-thirds of the total would be the studios and one bedrooms, which would provide an opportunity for entry-level renters. Uh, that, that residential component is basically all of these buildings that you see here. I don't know if you can follow my cursor, hopefully. So that's the south, and then, and then extending up here on the west side, this area. And then a 120-room hotel here, located in the northeast corner. And then proposed reuse of those timber, uh, school buildings that I just mentioned, which are located here in the northwesternly corner of the property. Based on that, that concept, the proposed land use change is from commercial to commercial and residential. Commercial residential is a category in our general plan. It would be appropriate for this site because the site is planned to house both commercial and residential, rather than, uh, all of one or the other. According to our general plan policies, uh, use of the commercial residential land use category requires a specific plan. And that is what, uh, we are recommending that you, uh, consider for this project, uh, if it goes forward. More specifically, this is how that commercial residential concept breaks out. The, uh, commercial area, as I noted, uh, a few minutes ago, is up here in the northeast corner of the property. That comprises about almost two and a half acres. The balance of the property, including the historic buildings and, and the residential area, is a little bit over seven acres. We are recommending that this be, uh, considered for high-density residential, which allows, under the, uh, general plan, up to 30 units per net acre. The proposal before you tonight is approximately 29, uh, dwelling units per acre. I should note that even though the applicant has an affordable component of the project, they are not requesting a density bonus. That density bonus, by the way, based on their affordable mix, would, uh, result in approximately another 47 units. In terms of Measure E, obviously, the, the first reason that we're here tonight is to consider allocation of, of residential units to the property. 218 are being requested. I probably should have put that in quotes because that's based on the area times the maximum density. The applicant, as I noted, is requesting, uh, 210 units. So a little bit less than the maximum, which is not uncommon in these types of measuring analyses. That would use about 16% of the current citywide measuring pool, which is, uh, 1,380 units right now. So that would drop to 1,162 units. Because some of this land is commercial today and would go to residential potentially through this process, that commercial area, I didn't note, note it here on the slide, but that seven acres would also go into a citywide commercial bank, which is also part of, of the measuring, uh, uh, law. And that would boost the commercial bank from about four to 11 acres. So, uh, you've certainly been through this process before, but just to reiterate, the pre-screening process is required for any kind of, uh, measuring allocation, whether it's residential or, or commercial. What you have before you is an early concept, and it's intended to get it in front of you so that you can weigh in on it, rather than weighing in on it at the very tail end of the process after a lot of time and, and effort has been expended. The project design before you, it is a concept. It's likely that it will be modified to some degree going forward, but the, the cap that you had put on it tonight through the measuring allocation does limit the density. Uh, we do require that a formal application be submitted within a year, uh, unless you, you approve otherwise. And then, of course, if you opt to allow this project to go forward tonight, it does not denote, uh, final approval by City Council. So, how do we evaluate such projects? There are four basic, uh, areas that we look at. We look at, uh, residential suitability. We look at design quality. We look at how the project strives to meet, uh, state mandates for, uh, housing. And then we also look at broad community benefits, not so much to the potential future residents, but to the broader community. So in terms of residential suitability, these are some of the primary, uh, reasons that staff thinks this is an appropriate, uh, uh, concept, uh, for this site. As I mentioned before, it's adjacent to residential, uh, and commercial uses. Many of the commercial, uh, uses are within walking or biking distance. Uh, there are also, uh, park and open space areas, uh, nearby. Michael Park here to the west, uh, Stagecoach Park here, Stagecoach Inn Park here to the, to the east. And then the Ventu Park Open Space to the south, uh, at the lower part of this image. Another interesting, uh, perspective on this proposal is that if you look at the neighborhood, uh, neighborhoods to the south, you can see that they, they grade from medium density to low density to very low density as we proceed down toward Lynn Road. And so the, the proposed high density in terms of, of that gradient, uh, on a portion of the property, as shown in this image, uh, would, would continue that gradient with the higher density located up near Newbury Road and the freeway. Few other, uh, comments that we wanted to make. The building heights that are proposed are consistent, uh, with the, uh, adjacent buildings to, uh, the east, the, uh, commercial, uh, buildings. The proposed heights are an average of 35 feet for both the hotel and the apartments. We'll talk a little bit more about that. Should also note that the, the grading design would result in, uh, the, the pad for the property being significantly lower than the adjacent residential to the south, which rises up as you head from, from west to east. There's also a pretty significant separation between the proposed buildings and the southernmost property line as well. Another, uh, and this is our last slide on, on, uh, design quality, but another set of observations. The concept includes four different parks/recreation areas, as shown in this image outlined in the red dots. There's a small parklet up near, uh, up near, uh, Newbury Road. There's one on the west side, adjacent to East Kelly. There's one proposed in the, in the south center of the property. And then there's a pool complex, uh, further to the south. And those would all be obviously available for residents. And then the architecture is, is interesting. I think it's appropriate. It's, uh, it's designed Spanish Revival, actually tees off of the historic buildings on site and provides, I think, ample articulation and, and design quality. And that then leads us to, what would this project look like? These are, uh, photo simulations, uh, of the property. This happens to look, uh, southwest from Newbury Road. So what you're looking at is actually the proposed, uh, hotel here. That's this, this area. And then that grades directly into the residential and then grades into the historic buildings at the corner. This is a view looking southeasterly from, uh, Newbury Road. So these are the historic buildings in the foreground. Uh, schoolhouse here, auditorium there, and then residential behind it. And then this is a, a simulation looking east-northeast from East Kelly Road. This is, um, this is an example of, of landscape areas, which are quite, um, ample on both the north and, and west sides, extending up to 75 feet, uh, in terms of setback of these buildings from adjacent public roads. As you can see, nice design, a lot of balconies, uh, a lot of, uh, visual interest. There are trees on site. There are a lot of, uh, non-native trees, but there are some, uh, protected trees. There is a California black walnut right up here in the northeast corner. It is about nine, nine inches in trunk diameter. So that qualifies it as protected status. Uh, there is a toyon right here in about the middle of the property, uh, eight inches in, in, uh, in trunk diameter, also of protected status. And then there are five oak trees here along this bank. And they are comparatively small, but, uh, they're all protected status, ranging, as noted here, from three inches to nine inches in trunk diameter. There's also two larger oaks, each 12 inches in diameter. That's, uh, shown with the green outline here on the west side. And those would be incorporated, in fact, into that little parklet that I just showed you in the photo simulation. So those would be, uh, protected in situ. So now we're moving on to the third of those four evaluation criteria. That's Regional Housing Needs Assessment. These are housing mandates, uh, required by the state of California for all cities and, and counties. These are housing mandates required by the State of California for all cities and counties. And what this project is proposing, as I mentioned early on, 26 affordable units, which would include 13 low and 13 very low-income units. And those are defined as 50 and 80% of area median income. That will meet almost a quarter of our current outstanding arena need, which currently is 56 low-income and 64 very low-income units. And those hopefully would be able to be met before we submit our next housing element in the fall of 2021. So finally, we come to community benefits. That is, what are the broad benefits of this project? And I think there's basically three. One, it provides over 180 market rate units, and clearly, that's, that's a need in the community regardless of state mandates. Also, there are 26 units that are affordable to, you know, working, working individuals who are entering the workforce and looking for an affordable rent. And then finally, the reuse of the historic structures on site. Just a quick note that this allocation and initiation of the general plan amendment is not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. If this project goes forward, then a full environmental analysis will be conducted of the project. The concept before you, I think, is, is consistent with at least two, two, one goal and one objective that you have laid out, and this is one of, one of council's goals, and that is to support high-quality revitalization projects in part along the Newberry Road itself, and then to support production of long-term affordable housing in the community. And then in terms of your current one-year priorities, one of those top 10 is to try to address the state-mandated regional housing need targets. So, next steps, should you so decide to allow this to go forward, would be the real beginning of the, of the formal process, pre-application, typically resulting in some minor changes to a, to a design. And then the formal application, I won't go through all these components, but clearly there's, there are many moving parts to that, that application, including the specific plan. And then based on that, the environmental review would be conducted, planning commission would review it, give you their recommendation, and then you would have the final action on the project. So with that background, staff is recommending that you allocate the residential capacity of 218 units to the, to the property, to the project, and then also initiate the general plan amendment as I described. And finally, to authorize concurrent processing of the entire package of entitlements and legislative actions. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, and to my left is the case planner, Associate Planner Don Nielsen. And with that, again, happy to answer any questions.
We'll receive counts, questions from the council, but first, Mr. Powers would like to speak.
Just really quickly, because, you know, we, we don't have many of these pre-screens. Process is still comparatively new for the City Council, but I think it always bears mention for those that are watching at home and are here in the audience. While it may seem like a project proposal has just arrived forward, I can assure you, having been in, in discussions on this particular piece of property for over two years with the applicant, and the applicant certainly longer than that, there have been a variety of iterations, contemplated a tremendous amount of work from Mr. Town and his team, and working hand-in-hand with the applicant and their team in a spirit of cooperation to try to refine a project that met with planning staff support, which is what's before you this evening. So it's just important for me to remind the council that there's a lot of work and effort that has gone into this to date, so that the community understands that, just for context. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Councilmember Bill DeLaPena.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. I know this has been quite a while in the making, as the city manager mentioned, and we were off to a rough start a little bit with the preservation of Timber School, but I wanted to go back to the protected trees. I was under the impression when I met with the applicant, and maybe I can ask the applicant when you, when you speak, that all of the trees would be protected under this proposal. I know it's not what we're really here to discuss. We're here to allocate, give thumbs up or thumbs down for the units, but I wanted to know about the trees, the protected ones.
Sure. So we identified the protected trees in that image really to, to lay out, no pun intended, the landscape before us. Staff will work with the applicant to protect those trees in place, if at all possible. If you look at the, the site plan, the walnut tree in the northeastern corner is actually within a planned landscape planter. I mean, that is in that, there's a planter in that exact area. The slope on the east side, which has the oaks, we're hoping to be able to protect those trees. I think we can probably protect three of the five in place. The others two will make an effort. If we are unsuccessful, we will look at transplanting on-site and, and removal and replacement through mitigation would be our last, our last option. So right now, it's, I think it's safe to say that applicant and staff will certainly work to protect those trees, if at all feasible.
Thank you.
Councilmember Angler.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. The, the site is now zoned institutional, correct? Was it rezoned commercial?
It was, it's commercial today. It used to be institutional.
The, the former use, though, is of basically a repair yard for the, the schools, correct?
It was used as a maintenance yard and then also a continuation high school.
Very good. The, the hotel that's planned, 120-unit hotels, is that about the same size as the ones that are in that general area now?
Yes, it is.
And just, just curious, there's, there's a bunch of hotels in that, or motels in that area. Is there a, is there a need for more room space there that you're aware of, or is it something that we can look at?
So we have about an 80-85% occupancy rate for our local hotels, so there appears to be significant demand. We recognize that there are a number of hotels in this particular area. It's a function of many, many variables. In part, I think it's, it's a function of the, the industrial park area to the north in the Rancho Caneo area. But having said that, over the last five years, we've looked at hotel concepts on at least three other properties that I can think of quickly in central and eastern Thousand Oaks. So it's, it's really, I think, a function more of land availability than, than anything unique to this particular site, although the proximity to Rancho Caneo, I think, is important.
And there's, there's commercial on either side of this, this property, correct? One in the, I call it the Holdren's Shopping Center there, and then also Nicole Shopping Center. Have you done any research with them as far as their support and unsupport of the project?
I have not spoken with those tenants or property owners at this point.
And then finally, can you, can you further define for everybody affordable and what that means, affordable housing? I think there's an image in people's minds that perhaps isn't, isn't current.
The, probably the easiest way to understand it is by looking at maximum rental rates for those categories. Again, lower income is an income that is 80% or less of area median income, and very low income is 50% or less of, of area median income in terms of the county median. So that's how, how individuals qualify for one of these units. And then the units themselves cannot exceed a certain amount, which is set by the state. And for instance, for 2019, a two-bedroom apartment, the monthly payment cannot exceed $1,100. So that's roughly half of market rates, and, and that's the benefit to those, to those individuals that would rent those, those units.
And then what, what income levels are we looking at? You said 80%. What is the county average?
Bear with me for just a moment. So the, the current, let's, let's talk about a two-person household. The maximum income for lower-income resident would be $67,000. And, and that's based on a median for a four-person household. Obviously, we have a two-person household in this table as well. But a common metric is a four-person household, median income, county of insurance, current is $97,800. So that's the median to which these income levels are, are compared. And so, again, for an individual, lower income, making 80% of that, of that AMI maximum income is $58,600. So these are many, you know, full-time working individuals who are working in entry-level positions in a wide variety of industries. So when we, when we say lower income and very low, still, these are, are significant incomes for many individuals. Thank you, Mr. Town.
One piece I might add to it, the reason there's complexity to it, so these are set at the county level. They're also based not just on median income, but the number of people within the household, and so the max you can have at a one, two, three, four-person household. So that's why there's a lot of numbers involved.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes. I'd just like to go forward with that question about affordability. You say that there could be eight more units on this.
So when somebody, well, first of all, under the city zoning category, the applicant could, could request, try to fit eight more units onto the property. But under the density bonus law, based on the affordable units, they could actually request an additional 47 units, or a total of 55. They've opted not to do that and to go forward with the 210.
Yeah, I think that'd be awfully crowded, but I do, I'm very interested in trying to produce more affordable housing, and I just thought that might be one way to do it, but we're not getting into the final details. This is just what the red light, green light.
Yes.
Hearing to see if they go forward. I understand parking would be also subterranean? Is that it?
It would be a combination of subterranean and surface, and the applicant is actually providing parking spaces in surplus for the, for the site.
You know, I have a number of questions. Would it be more appropriate if I waited until the applicant spoke?
I believe so.
I'll reserve my questions to talk to the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. We're going to call the applicant. Mark Sellers. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mark Sellers. I'm with the Jackson Titus Law Firm. I'm here representing the applicant, daylight Thousand Oaks. I am a more than 30-year resident of Thousand Oaks, which reminds me of when I first came to the city. One of my first jobs was here at City Hall, was to try and get this Caneo High School relocated. It's taken some time. We finally have, and the reason for that was to get a tax-generating, private use on that site rather than a school that doesn't pay any taxes. And I think, hopefully, we're getting near reaching that goal. The reason we're here tonight is that the site was, is zoned commercial. We hired the world's largest retail broker to find tenant, possible tenants for a new commercial center on that site. They worked for three and a half years and found basically that the retail demand is dropping because of the internet, and there's this 15-foot-high sound wall that runs in front of this property. And one of the things I learned a long time ago about commercial viability is traffic counts are very important. You want people in cars driving by a site who are potential customers to be able to see the new businesses there. What everybody said was, when's that sound wall going to go? And we approached Caltrans. We spent a lot of time with them. They were kind of surprised by our request. They said, everybody comes down here to Caltrans to ask for new sound walls, nobody comes to us to ask for one to be removed. So it took some time for them to decide what they wanted of the applicant. And finally, they said, we want some noise studies, that if the, without that wall, if those noise studies show that there's any increase in sound to the residents to the south, we're not going to allow you to remove it. So we did those noise studies, and unfortunately, yes, there's going to be increase to those residents to the south. Not a lot of increase, but there's going to be an increase. Caltrans then said, the wall stays. So we have now a commercial site that, with no viable use. So we're here tonight to ask for the, a use that is mostly apartments, a residential use, 210 units, and a hotel, which to me is similar to a residential use. The hotel that we're talking with is an upper-end boutique hotel, and they say their guests don't need to see the hotel site. They book online. They book because of our reputation. They stayed with us before, they come back again. So it seemed to be a very natural mix, and the sound wall can stay and probably benefits the people staying at the hotel. We, another factor I think we ought to mention is that we have looked at the vacancy rates in that area. We have looked at the hotel's average blended rate. When that hotel is stabilized, we feel that it will generate $500,000 a year to the city in transient occupancy tax. So that's, that to me is also a benefit of the project. So it, it's something that is going to help you do many other things that you may not have the money for now, and that's on an annual basis. We aren't asking for a density bonus. We don't want any financial incentives, and we're not asking for any waiver of city standards. And when you get into the density bonus realm, you start dealing with all that. We'd rather do what we feel is a well-designed project and not request any waivers or seek any financial assistance. I noted that the general plan states that densities at the rate we're proposing should be, projects should be located close to commercial centers and along the 101 freeway. And that's exactly what this project would provide. These would be located very close to the on-and-off ramps at Ventu Park and Borchardt Road to the 101, and also close walking distance to commercial centers. And one, Cole's, seems to be struggling. They still have a phase that they never built out, that's still vacant land. And we've talked with a number of the restaurant owners over there, and they're very supportive of bringing potential customers into the apartment use. As was mentioned, there are 26 affordable units. Rather than put most of those affordable units at the low-income rate, we evenly divided them 16-16, so that 16 of those units are the very low-income rate, which is a, a hit to the economics, but the applicant's willing to do it. We also agreed with the city that we were going to hire a preservation consultant out of Pasadena to work with the transition from the historic buildings and the improvements to the historic buildings and the apartment project. We have met with the Caneo Valley Historical Society, and my general reading is that they're very supportive of this project. We've talked about possibly having an office in the administration building for the Historical Society, and also perhaps some display areas within the auditorium. And if you look at the auditorium right now, it's, it's not the most attractive building. It has some very old and beat-up air conditioning units on the roof. We intend to relocate those to the ground in smaller units and basically make that a much more attractive-looking building and improve this key intersection in Newberry Park, putting some landscaping there rather than getting rid of the asphalt that's on that corner now, and basically beautify this site. And the bottom line is, without a viable private use on the rest of the property, we cannot really preserve those historic buildings like they should be. So that's what we're seeking tonight. With that, I can turn it, unless there are any questions, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gallagher to talk about the community outreach.
Councilmember Bill DeLaPena has a question for you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sellers. I'm, I'm just asking about the trees again. When we met on-site, I was under the impression that all of the protected trees would be saved.
We are, we are going to attempt to do that. The problem is that we have a tree study, a tree report that was done with a project that was a commercial project more than a year ago. And what we need to do is to take, and we've gone through a number And what we need to do is to take, and we've gone through a number of redesigns since that project, we need to get back with the tree consultant and see, how can we save as many trees as possible, and what trees need to be, can be relocated. There is one California walnut tree there that, to me, looks like it's dead, so I don't know whether there's anything that can be done with that. It's just not a leaf on, on the tree.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Wanted to let you know I conducted three types of outreach on this project. First, I conducted outreach to the neighbors that has been going on by one of the property owners, Mr. Kaufman, over the past several years. He's met with neighbors from a wide area around this, back, going back to the time when he originally purchased the property. In this past summer, I conducted two outreach meetings with neighbors from the Kelly Road HOA. Total of about 30 people attended those two meetings. There were concerns about the traffic and the density, how the apartments and hotels might change the nature of their neighborhood. There were also a number of neighbors who told me that, given the emptiness of that area, that they had begun to see a problem with vagrants in the area. I encouraged all those neighbors to attend tonight's meeting. There's one very specific concern we have addressed, the neighbors on Galway Lane were concerned with how the proximity of the apartments to their homes might affect their privacy. And you'll see from the architect that he's moved those buildings further away from Galway Lane, and added significant vegetation to enhance their privacy. The second outreach, as Mark mentioned, was the people who've been involved in historic preservation and efforts, and those cultural and historic groups, such as the Stagecoach Inn and Museum. We conducted two meetings there. I'm especially grateful to Kathy Boone for hosting these meetings, she's gonna speak a little bit later. And we're fortunate enough to have, fortunate to have Mr. William Maple, whom many of you know, helping us in this process. He's a wealth of knowledge on the history of the Caneo Valley, and I'm Roy Wilson, the architect of these buildings. We discussed in general the future of these buildings and how they could best be preserved to honor their special place in the history of the Caneo Valley. And with the help of city staff, Don Nielsen, and with our architect, Brian Poliquin, we're on our way to develop a very good plan for those, as, as Mark suggested. One building would be primarily for use for administrative and education purposes, as it was originally intended, and the second building, the auditorium, would be used for more cultural art, performing arts, and the gallery spaces, as that was originally intended. Now, that's a smaller building, so we'd have to match our expectations to the scale of the building, but the intent is to use these for the public benefit of the community. And finally, to Councilman Engler's point, I did outreach to the surrounding businesses, some of whom I hope can make it tonight, but this is also a time when they're doing business, so it might be tough. I talked to two restaurant owners and the manager of the Runners World. They naturally welcome the additional business that the apartment and hotel occupants would likely bring. And the sales manager, the assistant sales manager at the Marriott, told me something very surprising, I thought I might get a negative reaction to him. They actually welcome more hotels in that area. He told me that from Monday through Thursday night, they're frequently sold out, and that their Marriott Rewards members are annoyed with them because they can't get into the Marriott Hotel there. So they really look, look forward to having more hotels in the area, more hotel rooms in the area. And that's it for the public outreach. Brian Poliquin, our architect on the project, is up next.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you. My name is Brian Poliquin, I'm with PK Architecture. I've actually been a resident of Thousand Oaks for about 28 years. I'll just go through a couple of items really quick, I got about six minutes, and hopefully I won't use up all that. But, anyway, the project was, we, we worked closely with planning, with, with, to come up with a plan that we felt was the, the correct plan for the organization of the site. It's got a little bit of a urban-suburban layout to it. Mainly, what it's gonna consist of, obviously, is the, the apartment units and the surface-parked hotel, which is three-story hotel. The units are gonna be designed in a Mission Revival. The impetus for that Mission Revival style was that the, the old Timber School buildings, which are actually Mission Revival buildings, actually, right now, they have a different type of roof, but ultimately, we'll re-roof that with the Spanish tile, clay tiles, authentic. And, and we'll work on the resurfacing of the building, we'll work on a consultant, with a consultant, that deals with restoration. I have done restoration work before, so we'll work on the surfacing of the building, the structure of the building, eliminating the ugly mechanical screens on the, the theater building, and putting mechanical units on the ground. Probably, we call them split minis and things like that, so that we can make the roofline look more appropriate. Our client told us we could do quality architecture. So, when we do a Mission Revival style, we're gonna use some more interesting forms, we really look to a lot of what's been done up in Santa Barbara, to create the forms, the little chimneys, the balconies, and do hard trowel stucco, do boosted clay tile, multi-color as opposed to just a single color, single-layer clay, copper detailing. To make the buildings really authentic, we've worked on some other buildings like that, so we feel pretty confident that we can create a project like that. There was some comments about the trees. We did create a parklet for the oak trees that were across from Kohl's. The walnut tree in the back is actually contained in a landscape area, and we'll work through the whole site to try to retain as many of the trees, which has been mentioned. But I know right now, the oaks, because that's on grade as it goes into the parklet, so we don't have to deal with a lot of grading around those areas, so those trees can be protected. So, we will make all those efforts to make sure, and we'll have a landscape architect, there will be a tree report, all the appropriate measures will have to be done, we'll be working with Don and Mark to put together a project, obviously, that has to be appropriate. Another thing to mention on this project is, it does have quite a bit of subterranean parking. All the units are basically supported by subterranean parking. We have guest parking on surface. The hotel motel, or it's not a motel, it is a hotel, is surface-parked, which is most appropriate for that type of use. So I, I think those are really the key things that are gonna make this project interesting. The two- and three-story design, I don't know if you looked closely at the renderings, we spent quite a bit of time trying to develop the massing of these buildings. There's two-story along the perimeter, and three-story internal, so we're not hitting the street with really high buildings, but letting the buildings terrace up, and not overcoming the scale of the Timber School buildings. We've also created relief between the Timber School buildings and our buildings, so that we give some breathing space, so that those can really be identified and appreciated. We also plan to do a nice, interesting hardscape, softscape corner at the Timber School buildings, and that's something, well, obviously, we'll wanna spend a lot more time working on with our landscape architect, to make that corner an interesting corner. It, it was interesting that when we talked to the folks in, in these historical meetings over at the Stagecoach Inn, they really wanted to see sort of a preservation of Newberry Park, and the Timber School buildings represent that. So a lot of the way we're gonna handle the project is gonna be sort of in respect to those buildings. So, that's all I have to say tonight, but if you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you very much.
Right, thank you.
Well, at this time, we're going to move on to our public speakers, and we'll begin, you have three minutes, you don't have to use it all. We'll begin with Robert Patterson, followed by Carmen Chiveras? Does that mean "cool" in Spanish? That's awesome. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and the rest of the council. Thank you for your time tonight. My name's Rob Patterson, or Robert Patterson. I live on Galway Lane, and it's kinda funny, like, thinking about this, there's all the NIMBY issues, but this literally is our backyard. We love our city. My kids learn to ride a bike here, it's where I became a homeowner. We've lived there, me and my family, about 12 years now, coming up in November. We have many Dodger games, where we watch on our big screen, our neighborhood, we love each other. We're a small street, but we love who we have there. And I appreciate this opportunity, just the dialogue, that this is a pre-meeting, this is not a huge vote, my understanding is. But I do have a concern of the lack of communication for us. I know there was a, a reach-out meeting by Mr. Gallagher, two meetings, but they're the same week, and if you're on vacation in summer, most of our neighbors could not make that meeting. And then, our HOA was supposed to send out a letter, that didn't happen. I ended up personally sending out a letter to my neighbors just on Galway, just saying, "Hey, this meeting's tonight." I think I gave an email to the girls up front of different, different neighbors, we were just emailing each other, just trying to pass on their comments and concerns, just because of the proximity and just, there it is. It's a three-story building, 90 feet from your backyard, which is not a deep backyard. Everyone I've talked to is concerned, some are very concerned, a little more strongly-worded emails than I would make, but you get the idea. So, tonight's my first time seeing the plan myself, and so just trying to learn that and see the different beauty, but some of the concerns we have is a history concern, that my understanding from different neighbors is, when the Marriott was built, there were some promises made to our HOA to build our own little, like, area that was never fulfilled. I can't speak to that, 'cause that was before I moved in. Similar with Kohl's about height restrictions on buildings along that way. Once again, that's before my time moving in the neighborhood. But there's a concern of what promises are made, and will they actually be kept for the residents? Yeah, it'd be nice if the businesses next to us get more customers, well, of course, more people's more customers, but what benefit does it actually help the people who live next to that? That doesn't seem to be addressed too much in the plan. And the concern for me is just the density. I love neighbors, I welcome neighbors, that's my personality, but 218 units, if you're talking four people per unit, do the math, that's in a very small block, right there. I lived in apartments when we first moved out here to Thousand Oaks, and parking at apartments is tricky. They give you about one parking space per unit, and every unit takes about two or three, because everyone has, they have multiple cars. Well, they're not gonna park on Newberry Road, that's illegal. Can't park on Kelly Road, so they're gonna come around the corner and park on our street. And we're already, it said, medium density. We have one parking spot in front of our house, and if your neighbor has a car there, you just don't get to park on the street in front of your house, already. So, that's a huge concern of just what does that look like for us? Yeah, and just a lot of the overcrowding in there, so.
Okay. That's it, thumbs up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carmen, you'll be followed by John Freeman. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Carmen Chiveras, I've lived in the Caneo Valley for 43 years. I live in Kelly Park, which abuts the property. Let's go back for a while, that wall was built for the kids that were trying to learn their lessons at school, and they built it too long, and the businesses made Caltrans take down part of that wall. That's the truth. Also, that area in Newberry Park is very unique in the whole freeway corridor from Wendy to Whizzen's. There are no other areas that have freeway-facing businesses as we do in Newberry Park. It's a very wonderful community, and I think people get to see that. And then we have, of course, our In-N-Out Burger that brings a lot of traffic. The developer had come with an original proposal that I thought fit that area much better, which was commercial along the frontage, and condos in the back with the hotel. Of course, they weren't able to get anybody to, to move there with that 20-foot, 15-foot wall. At the time, they had said, that the city had said that they would probably be willing to take down the wall, which I think should happen if it, if it remains commercial. So, to me, the win-win would be that they have the commercial in the front with the condos in the back, and some of them, and affordable if they wanted. I don't think they really need the hotel, so they could build a couple more condos. Also, the danger, when I, around the time I moved, the hills of Newberry Park were on fire, there weren't that many people living up in the hills, but now there are. So, now the fire's gonna be 10 times stronger when it happens again. They're gonna come down, they're gonna go to Lynn Road, and we're gonna go out to Newberry Road. And just think of all the people coming out there, and all the people from Kelly, from Kelly Park, trying to make their way out of that area. It's very dangerous. So that's all I have to say for tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you, Carmen. John Freeman, followed by William Maple? John Freeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity tonight. I've been a resident in Newberry Park for about 30 years, and what attracted me here was the open spaces, the beauty of all the landscaping and everything. My wife and I bought the house on Galway in the end of 2003, and we lived directly behind the big maintenance shed that was on that location. That stayed there for 14 years. During that 14 years, we had a little slice that we could see through between the hotel and that maintenance shack of the Seamy Hills. That was the only little view we had. You put three-story buildings in front of that, and we have no view whatsoever. So my chief concerns is the density that you're going to raise in the population area is almost 300% over Newberry, over Kelly Park, as it is today. I don't believe the architects have considered the fact that Newberry Road is actually just slightly above the floodplain. So underground parking is gonna be really interesting when the drains come. Not a good idea. I hope you vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. William Maple, followed by Kathy Boone. Good evening.
Good evening. William Maple, resident Newberry Park, Mayor McCoy, and members of our Cultural Heritage Board. I apologize upfront, some of this may be redundant, but I'm gonna read because I'll stay on track. Four years ago, the Caneo Valley High School was rezoned from public PL to institutional? I get confused, because the rezoning's been moving quite a bit to commercial. The Planning Commission approved this with several stipulations addressing the two county and city landmarks on the property. The agreement included controls, quote, "to preserve the Timber School landmark consistent with the general plan. Failure to comply could mean cancellation or termination of the project. Enforcement by the city meant periodic reviews and good-faith compliance. There was a very rocky period when the site was abandoned and vagrants began to occupy and vandalize. Thankfully, the city and fire marshals stepped in and required some cleanup and boarding up of the property to protect the landmarks for the future. Since then, Tim Gallagher stepped in and arranged information meetings at the Stagecoach Inn, and now I'm learning of elsewhere. The city planning rep attendant, residents' comments were shared, including some pioneering Caneo Valley founding members. They unanimously agree that any future use must benefit the public, honoring the original public land zoning, and they preferred something educational. The architect, Brian Poliquin, I'll say it right eventually, represented his vision quite clearly, it's, it's changed a little bit, and he took the time to listen, which I really appreciated. He lives here, he gets it, you know, is, is really, I believe his intent is to do the best project he can. He shared his successful background restoring his historic buildings. He also stated his intent to preserve and incorporate both landmarks into the rezoned commercial-residential mixed use, I'm, I'm trying to catch up for the new stat, zoning there. To ensure his company would hire, to ensure this, his company would hire a historic preservation firm to research and establish restoration guidelines. Several entities have shown interest in utilizing the site, the historic two buildings, especially the auditorium. But they're finding hard to difficult visualizing that they're boarded up and abandoned at that, this point, it's difficult to commit. I believe that a proactive Thousand Oaks Cultural Heritage Board oversight will ensure that the landmarks are not left to the elements again, especially during this long planning and development process. Timber School House is now 95 years old, is the oldest public building in the Caneo Valley. I do hope that tonight's incision will, decision will ensure that we see a grand reopening for the 100th anniversary in 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Maple. Thank you very much. Kathy Boone, followed by Alice Stewart. Good evening.
Hi. My name's Kathy Boone, and I'm a full-time volunteer at the Stagecoach Inn Museum. And I, I just want to also commend Tim Gallagher and Mark Sellers for their public outreach efforts to the cultural part of the community, and bringing the property owner's plans for the site to the public, and for listening to the community's concerns and ideas for repurposing the two historic- repurposing the two historic school buildings. It felt very much like a partnership. In my notes from the June 5 public outreach meeting held at the Stagecoach End Museum, I recorded, and mind you, these are my notes, I recorded Don Nielsen, associate planner, as stating that the city will require the developer to obtain a historical consultant, establish the two historical buildings period of historical significance, provide a historical resources report, I'm guessing that's a historical resources treatment plan, ensure that all interior changes are compliant with Secretary of the Interior standards and guidelines for historic properties and sequins for historical resources. Are those requirements still in place? Then, I'm in favor of the developer's plan for restoring and repurposing the historical buildings, use of the land surrounding the buildings, and integrating the historical buildings, if those stipulations of the city are met. And if the developer honors his commitment to provide space in the administration building and the auditorium for community programs and events, including historical programs, art exhibits, classes, dance, or music recitals. As well, the developer must stand by his offer to have the project's leasing office staff coordinate use of the buildings by community groups. That was the one piece that we could not, it's essential, it's an essential piece of the plan, because if we can't, if we don't have somebody coordinating the use, it all falls apart. That's it.
Thank you very much. Alice Stewart, followed by Desiree Monarsothan, I think. Good evening.
Hi. I'm Alice Stewart, and I'm in support of the reuse of Timber School. I have lived here since 1963, so I've been here for 56 years. I'm almost the same age as the Timber School, and so I appreciate that it's going to be continued and have purpose again. It's been very sad for me to see it just languishing these last few years when it's been, had so much purpose all its life, and it is going to be 100 years old soon, and I want to be there for its anniversary. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Desiree, you'll be followed by Robert Williams. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to say some words. I've been a resident of Newberry Park since 1967. I know I look good, but anyway. So just so you know, we did purchase a condo in 1986 that backs up to, we're on, we're on Galway, which backs up to the property that they're proposing. When we purchased that property in 1986, we bought it because we knew that there wouldn't be any noise behind us after 6:00 PM, and there wouldn't be anybody there on the weekend, and that we had a nice view of the mountains. And we knew that we had that because we bought it back then. What they're proposing is to now put noise behind me, block the view, and a lot of people. As Mr. Pedersen said, that we don't have very much parking on our street, and the flow over from what's going to come from there is going to load into our street, where we won't have any room to go. When the school was there, we had a lot of people who were doing drugs that would come onto our block from the school and would then frequent on our street, and a lot of vandalism and stuff happened at that time, where we had to take care of it. So adding more people in and putting more condos in there is only going to bring more people and more stuff onto our block or into our community. It'll also interrupt with our privacy while I know that they're putting a 90-foot space in between, or 80-foot space, I thought it said. That's still three stories. That's going to be looking into my backyard, and I don't, I didn't purchase the property with the effects of somebody coming into my backyard or looking into my neighborhood. I think that part of it's going to also bring down our value of our property because of the amount of dwelling spots that they're going to be putting in there. I find that it's just nerve-wracking. I would like it if you consider keeping it as a commercial property. While I do appreciate the fact that they're going to go ahead and preserve the school and the markings there, I would like to keep it as a commercial property rather than a residential property. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Where to start? I'm an alumni of Timber School. Graduated, did all eight years there, probably 1952 to 1960 or so. So my interest, and I'm happy to hear about the preservation and restoration that will occur with that. I don't live near, so the project doesn't affect me directly, as some of the folks have mentioned tonight, and their concerns there. I'm up Ventu Park Road on the hillside. You know, the history and, you know, it's almost an emotional aspect to it for me, having grown up with some of the Kellys, the Borchards, the Janes families at that time, and of course, having seen the whole Caneo Valley change drastically since then. So again, just the preservation, the restoration of the school, you know, really looking forward to that happening and, you know, bringing it back to a state of what it once was, hopefully. Hopefully, that'll go.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Folks, thanks for coming down and taking the time to share with us. Greatly appreciative. Council discussion? If there's any desire for staff responses, I... Councilmember Builda Lepena, did you have a question? Okay, staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few comments. There was a couple of comments about parking, and just wanted to say that the plan requires 520 parking spaces. The actual design provides 546, you know, 26 extra spaces. These are based on city standards, which are, which require more parking than state standards to begin with. State standards would have kicked in if a density bonus was pursued. So there is an ample amount of parking on site. The issue of promises made to neighbors kept. I'm not sure exactly the circumstances of that, but again, if this project does go forward, there will be a series of conditions of approval from multiple city departments, which are legally binding on the applicant and are a normal way to ensure compliance with an approved design. The topic of a floodplain was mentioned in our review of the floodplain map for this portion of the city. Subject property is not within our floodplain area. And I think that's all for now.
Thank you, Ms. Down. The applicant wants a rebuttal.
Thank you. I was just going to make a couple of comments. One, we haven't done any view analysis from the Galway residents or from that level. The site will eventually be lower. The apartments will be lower, and we certainly can do that between now and the Planning Commission hearing on the entitlements, get all sorts of view analysis of what from each of the homes up there in essence, almost. One of the things I've noted with the noise consultants I've been working with, doing the noise studies, is that three-story buildings actually reduce noise from the freeway. So that was one of the benefits we were trying to say to remove the sound wall. The bottom line is, we don't have control over Caltrans. The city doesn't have control over Caltrans. Caltrans wants to keep that wall, it stays there. And the wall stays there, we're not going to have any retail uses or commercial uses along the frontage. So that's just a fact of life. I think those are my basic comments, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council discussion? Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. My parking questions were answered, and I, Councilman Engler spoke about the rents. Could you just elaborate on that a little bit? I know that he got into that with you about affordable, the rents, and what was the percentage of the average income that is affordable, or some of these are what are called very affordable? Is that right?
So the way it basically works is there's a Ventura County area median income, which is a reference point, and lower-income residents are defined as earning 80% of that amount and very low.
That's for how many family members?
So the, the area median income varies, of course, depending on the size of the, of the household, but for a four-person household, the median income is $97,800.
What about a one person?
A one person, the median is $68,450. So to qualify as a lower-income, quote-unquote, resident, the maximum that they could earn annually is $58,600, for instance.
I think those titles are a little misleading. I mean...
I would tend to agree.
I mean, a beginning salary for a teacher is probably less than, very low, I guess. I mean, I don't think they start at $68,000, do they? Anyway, that's beside the point. What about preserving the school? Is the developer planning to maintain the school and the little parks that they were talking about?
Yes, the intent is to preserve the schools, to retain their current architectural design as required by the Cultural Heritage Board resolution. And then, of course, as I mentioned, there would be small parklets on site that would provide not only recreational opportunities, but additional visual relief from the buildings themselves.
Have you discussed with Cineo Rockin Park if they would be interested in maintaining that area and having programs there?
I have not spoken with CRPD, but I'm sure that conversation will, will happen if this goes forward.
Well, and the, the historical consultant, you know, I may be getting into greater detail here. I realize this is just a...
Yes.
Red light, green light. Oh, yes, you agree with me, Mr. Mayor.
I do.
Thank you. I appreciate that. But I, I know we can work out the final details later, but obviously, I'd like to preserve the school and have, if we can get the Historical Society involved, as I understand it was mentioned, to have tours there and really utilize that. I was really interested, Mr. Williams, and having gone there for the full eight years. When we first moved here, all the schools were eight years, the elementaries, and you didn't go to high school till, and there were no middle schools in those days. That's enough for me, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
Councilmember Engler?
Thank you, Mayor. My understanding of our intent tonight is to give feedback on the project. I think the, the intent of the developers to retain that historic structures there and then to model the architecture of the improvements to the property to match those is very good. I think it'll add some, a lot to that area of Newberry Park. The comments tonight from our, from your neighbors, though, I think, need to be addressed a little bit in that there, they have grown accustomed to the location as it, as it was and as it is now, and I would urge you to incorporate their concerns into your, your process going forward. But in terms of the, the project, I think the benefits to the city of coming up with some affordable housing is important. If you can see fit to add a little more to that, that'd be nice. The, adding the ability of the building to become an active building again, I think is a real, a real benefit to the, the community, especially that area of Newberry Park. So that, that's my feedback to you on the project so far.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Builda Lepena?
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. I would echo Mr. Engler's comment regarding the community outreach. So the, the very people, the residents who are living on that street are, of course, worried about privacy invasion with the view, and, and I would also urge you to reach out to them to address those concerns. I'm not sure why they were not part of the meeting that, or the meetings that you had other than being on vacation. I'm not sure if everybody...
Were there?
Oh, you were there?
Were there?
Okay. So, except for one. Okay. So thank you for clarifying that. But I, I think that, that is something that I would urge you to do, is to continue to work with them, to address their concerns regarding the view. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Mayor Protem, Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I can assure you that your concerns will be heard. This is a pre-screen process only. We're probably a year away from actually doing anything, and the, you know, the concerns that you have will be, will be heard during this, during this process. I'll tell you, I'll tell you one thing. In my opinion, that's a blighted piece of land out there. That's a blighted piece of land, where there's vacancy problems, there's, there's buildings in disrepair, there's dumping, it's on the freeway. It's obvious to me, commercial's not going to work. I think you had three commercial proposals. No one was interested. We have an 18% vacancy rate in commercial in the city of Thousand Oaks, but we, but what we do have a demand for is housing. Our vacancy rate in housing is like 2%. 5% would be considered extreme. We're down to 2. And everybody complains to me, oh, the rents are too high. The reason the rents are too high is because we have such little supply and such huge demand. If we can bring the supply up just a little, that may be able to bring those, those rents down. We do get some affordable with this, which I think is very important. It's one of the council priorities. We're low on very low and low-income housing. This will give us a 20%, 22% boost in that. And I'll tell you, I like the fact, and I hear this all the time, too. We don't have workforce housing in Thousand Oaks. We don't have enough workforce housing for doctors, teachers, or doctors, hold back up. Doctors are going to be fine. Teachers, firefighters, police.
How about nurses?
Nurses, thank you, thank you. Doctors, anyway. This will, you know, based on if this eventually goes through, and this has to come back to the council again to be voted on. 36 studios, 95 one-bedrooms, that's that workforce housing that, that we need and that we're looking for. And the hotel, I think, is going to work. You know, the vacancy rate is very low at all these hotels, and we're trying to build a biotech hub out there, and some of these businesses need a place to, you know, bring their people. So, you know, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's worth giving, giving the green light on a pre-screen to see how this thing develops. And the, and the big thing with the Timber School, too, that's really important. There's a lot of people that want to see that thing refurbished, and I think it's, the developer's going to do it for us instead of maybe the taxpayer, so I think that's a big plus, too.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion, I guess, since I have the mic, and...
All right.
That would be that we indeed...
Staff recommendation?
Move stack, thank you, stack recommendation 9B for the, we'll call it the Kelly Road project, and... Project, and give those units during this pre-screen.
Councilmember Bill de la Pena?
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. I will support the motion. This is a project that has been in the making for quite some time. It does address many of the issues that the city of Thousand Oaks is facing, namely housing, as well as preserving heritage. We are, as the city council, actually the Cultural Heritage Board, and it was 15 years ago that we voted, that the then-council voted to preserve Timber School, and it was thanks to William Maple, Kathy Boone, and others, I don't know all the names, but the Stagecoach Inn, who made this possible, that the council actually turned Timber School into a historic landmark, because it is the oldest building that we have, and we must do everything possible, you must do everything possible, to preserve that school and make it a benefit to the community. I think that the number of affordable units is actually very, very fair, but I want to remind Mr. Sellers that the city council doesn't make decisions based on sales tax, at least I don't, but I'm sure that my colleagues don't either. This is not anything that has to do with transit occupancy tax, but what is best for our community, and I do hope that you will continue to work with the neighbors on Galway Lane. So yes, I will support the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember. As we prepare the vote, I would just simply say to Mr. Sellers and your team, Mr. Patterson and Desiree Molnar, Molnar Suthen, if you could reach out to them, Tim, and understand their concerns and resolve that, work through that, but I am in favor at this moment just to let you proceed forward with this, and I know there's much more to do and citizens to meet with, so... Madam Clerk, if you prepare the vote? Thank you, Madam Clerk. I, yeah, Mayor Protam Adam, will you adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Albert Marley?
I will, Mayor, thank you. Just before we do that, though, were there any follow-up reports on meetings from council members, any, nothing?
I just give my quick update on the next council meeting.
All right, very good.
Our next meeting is scheduled for two weeks from tonight, on the 22nd of October. We currently have a public hearing on transit fare and services modifications, another pre-screen for the Kohan Project on Maurice Drive, and we'll hear updates from Councilmember Engler and Jones from the Annual League of California Cities Conference. Just for the council's benefit, I'll be attending the International City Managers Association Conference that evening, and Mrs. Hardy will be running that meeting. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. I think we have a closed session, do we not?
Yes, we do. We have one closed session on existing litigation, City of Thousand Oaks versus Southern California Edison, case number 56201900533120 pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91. It is unlikely they'll have anything to report.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. And this evening, we are going to, going to adjourn in the, in memory of Albert D. Marley, otherwise known as Bud, and Bud was a presence here in the community for many, many years, and we're adjourning in his memory. He passed away on September 4th. Dr. Marley is a resident of Thousand Oaks. He achieved a 60-year career as a teacher, a school administrator, and a community volunteer with eight years as the school superintendent in Ojai, and 11 years as superintendent of Los Verges Unified School District, helping to build that district into the one, one of the leading school districts in the state. Dr. Marley was recognized for his leadership by the Association of California School Administrators. He was selected as Administrator of the Year for his professional commitment and lasting contributions to the education of students in the state of California. Bud and his wife Jacqueline were notable fixtures at every significant civic event in the greater Caneo Valley, and I can attest to that personally, giving generously to community causes they championed, including cancer support, the California Museum of Art in Thousand Oaks, the Boys and Girls Club. As a memorial to his late wife, Dr. Marley endowed the Boys and Girls Club on the campus of the A.E. Wright Middle School in Calabasas. Dr. Marley leaves behind a host of friends and hundreds of professional colleagues around California, across the nation. We mourn his passing and extend sincere condolences to his family. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to adjourn our meeting, and we will see you in two weeks.